We are broadcasting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, and this is the regular council meeting of the Pinot City Council. I am calling the meeting for order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the U.S. Military Troops? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, um, oh, before you, before we all begin, may I please have the next slide up, please? Thank you. Oh, tiny writing there, but let me expand that. Before we all begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aloney Land, the land that Pinot sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support, and we look to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship mutual respect and understanding. And now, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Martinez Rubin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Salini.
Here.
Councilmember Taeve.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy. Noting for the record, I don't see Councilmember Murphy logged on as of yet, and Councilmember Toms.
Here.
City Manager Murray.
Here.
City Attorney Kasher.
Here.
Assistant City Manager.
Here.
Mayor and Council, the agenda was posted on Thursday, October 28th at 4:00 p.m. with all legally required notices. Written comments were received and posted to the Agenda page of the city's website and distributed to the City Council and relevant staff in advance of the meeting. Does the Council have any conflicts to report on our agenda items this evening? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is closed session, but we do not have any closed session this evening, so we jump to Citizens to be Heard. And at this time during Citizens to be Heard, uh, the time limit is three minutes and is subject to modification. Individuals may not share or offer time to another speaker pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act. No action may be taken on a matter unless it is listed on the agenda or unless certain emergency or special circumstances exist. The City Council may direct staff to investigate and/or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future council meeting. So Madam City Clerk or Ms. Stone, um, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have a few, uh, public comments. We'll start with Cordell Hindler.
Oh, hey, Mr. Hindler. Mr. Hindler?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. So, good evening, uh, Mayor Rubin, uh, Councilmembers, um. My name is Cordell Hindler. I'm a Richmond resident. So I have some good news to share with you all, so let's see. I would like to put in a request to have Ken Kirby to come to a future meeting to talk about the housing element for our for homelessness, because I find his presentation very helpful. Uh, so let's see then, that's one. Number two is, um, I can't wait to see you all in person again soon once the pandemic gets lifted. So I'd be more than happy to come visit the Pinot City Council. So that's it.
Okay, Raphael Menace.
Greetings, uh, Mayor, Councilstaff, and members of the public. I have a few comments this evening. First off, I'd like to note that this month is Native American Heritage Month. It's been observed for a few years according to information that I've found, and I think it might be worthwhile for the city to recognize that at a future meeting this month, if there is one, since I don't see it on tonight's agenda. Secondly, I was recently informed by the folks at MCE that they're running a community training program to help upscale, basically, people in the community to do reconstruction works jobs. It's a program called Rising Sun. They're taking applications, and they'll give you training and place you with a local employer for which MCE will be funding that employment. The hyperlink to apply is risingsunopp.org/program oppertunity-build. And then there's an additional comment for employers. So this is both an employee level and an employer level process. So you can reach out to MCE if you're interested in learning more either in employing people who have worked from that program or in taking part in that program yourself. Secondly, I note that we're still over 90% of initial vaccination, but for COVID, but that we haven't yet gotten to 90% uh, fully vaccinated, which is slightly concerning since I believe it's been over two weeks since the last council meeting when we were last at 90% partial vaccination. It's important to get both shots of the medication and/or booster shots as you're approved for them by the government, because the vaccine is significantly more effective if you have greater than one dose, as has been shown by numerous population-level observational studies. Finally, I appreciated the written comments provided, the first written comment provided for tonight's meeting, but I didn't see a name attached. Do we know who wrote that comment? Or if they want their name to be attached to it? Thank you.
Next, we'll have Jeff Rubin.
Good evening, Council. After a one-year hiatus due to the coronavirus pandemic, the Pinot Historical Society is happy to announce it will present the 13th Veterans Day Memorial and Flag Retirement Ceremony on Thursday, November 11th from 11:00 a.m. to noon in Fernandez Park. As you know, this has been a well-attended and well-received community event since its inception by the Pinot Historical Society in 2008. There will be speeches by Mayor Norma Martinez Rubin and Contra Costa County Supervisor John Jewett. But the beauty of this event is really the participation of community groups. This year, the West Contra Costa Girl Scouts, St. Joseph's School students, the Pinot Valley High School Marching Band, the Pinot Valley High School Concert Choir, Pinot Valley High School Student Speaker Randy Snob, Pinot Valley High School Cornetist Aiden Parsons will put tax, and the Knights Columbus Honor Guard of Vallejo will present the colors at the beginning of the ceremony. And this year, Pinot Police Chief Neil Gang and Pinot Fire Chief Chris Winco will also speak. The ceremony will conclude with the retirement of worn flags by Boy Scout Troop 86. So please bring your worn flags to the ceremony. Uh, we'll, it will be retired with respect, and there is no charge to retire a flag. This year, we're hoping to see some familiar faces and some new ones as we celebrate our living veterans, remember those who have passed, and commemorate their sacrifices to protect our country. For more information, you can call me, Jeff Rubin, at 510-724-9507, or email the Pinot Historical Society at info@pinothistoricalsociety.org. And thank you, and I hope to see all of you on this Zoom call at the event a week from Thursday, 11 o'clock in Fernandez Park. Thank you.
Next, we'll have David and Irma Ruport.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilstaff, and the general public. My name is David O'Ruport Jr., and I will likewise be speaking about, uh, November 11th, 2021. Our country will honor millions of men and women who dedicated a portion of their lives to the defense of our country. Along with Memorial Day, May 31st, it is a day which my wife and I hold dear to our hearts. It is a time when we can thank our family, military veterans, and all the other people who served in the Armed Forces of the United States of America. As previously stated on other occasions, both my wives and my family have served our country in time of war and peace for over the past 100 years. We honor their unselfish commitment to our country. Traditionally, we have either visited their grave sites, gone to a national cemetery to pay respects, and/or participated in local ceremonies, which includes Mr. Rubin's excellent, uh, presentation that he's going to have, uh, on the 11th. However you choose to do this, do it in a respectful way which you can honor your family according to what you would like to do. On the downside of things, on October 18th, 2021, our country lost Army veteran, National Security Advisor, Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, and Secretary of State Colin Powell. Following the tradition of other great Americans, uh, who were veterans like Benjamin Franklin, John Fitzgerald Kennedy, James Earl Carter, and Dwight David Eisenhower, Colin Powell proudly served his country as a member of the United States Army for over 35 years. As an agent of change, his accomplishments in the military were numerous and will be remembered forever by those who served under his leadership and guidance. However, his impact upon our country went well beyond his military career. When he retired from the military, he rededicated his life to making our country a better place for all Americans. What he accomplished during his military career, his public and private life, can be encapsulated by the attached 50 quotes from Colin Powell that I've attached, uh, to, uh, the City Council's box where you can place these accounts. Uh, they were actually published a few years ago by Parade Magazine. Uh, so I think you should take a look at them because they're very insightful and generally good advice. And maybe perhaps some of our city elected officials just think, look at them because they also give good advice for both private and public people, and then we can learn from them. If you want to learn more about Colin Powell, you can actually Google his name. Uh, he did a nice speech on May 1st, 2003, uh, uh, with Susan Bakoro-Garns, which, uh...
Next, we'll have Debbie. Debbie, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, now, the last meeting, you reconfirmed the resolution confirming the continued existence of a local emergency plan pursuant to an authorization from Governor Newsom's executive orders. This allows you to have meetings through Zoom. However, it does not mandate that you cannot hold in-person meetings. As of November 1st, Contra Costa County has eased its mask mandates and in some cases has held in-person meetings. On October 27th, Supervisor John Joya held a redistricting workshop in the San Pablo City Hall. It was noted that while there would be a Zoom link, people could attend in person while wearing a mask. So my question is, if it's good enough for John Joya to hold a town hall meeting, why is Pinot not opening up City Hall for council meetings? I realize that each month, under the consent calendar, you continue the resolution to keep emergency orders in place, but that vote has become rote with no discussion. I would request that at your next meeting, when this appears, it be taken up as old business so full discussion can take place. This Saturday, you will hold the second of two meetings regarding the spending of federal money in excess of $4 million. It is my understanding that at the last meeting, the turnout was not what you would have wanted. In part, this is due to Zoom. Before you close the door on input, allow the public to speak in person, the same as Supervisor Joya did for his own town hall meeting. Discussion on how to spend $4 million is no less important. Additionally, in keeping the meeting closed, it allows you, the council, the ability to literally tune people out or off. As I pointed out before, it appeared that one or two council members were turning off their cameras when some of us spoke. That doesn't seem to be the case anymore. However, there is no way of knowing whether or not someone is turning off their volume when they don't like what some individuals are saying. And let's face it, the captions at the bottom of the screen are somewhat less than accurate. Please open up our council chambers for in-person meetings and workshops. The time is long overdue. We are vaccinated, we are masked, and we are responsible. And on the note of responsibility, I don't know whether he's there or not, but Councilmember Murphy, as I have stated at every council meeting, you do not stand for the flag, nor will you tell this community why you refuse to do so. But have you ever asked yourself what the flag of this country means to so many of us? If you are honest and representing the citizens of Pinot, you should at least hear why we are so passionate about our country's flag and reflect upon whether your personal views are of more value than the citizens when you ask to represent us.
Thank you.
We have David and Irma Ruport.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilstaff, and public. This is Irma Ruport now. Uh, I'd like to ask Mayor and Council this evening if you could adjourn the meeting tonight on behalf of all the U.S. Military veterans and especially a giant of a man, Colin Powell, who served this country. He was one of us, one who started, like all of us, not rich, but rich as a person. And I would suggest that we continue living how he lived to serve his country, serve his community, and do it well with a passion for life and to help one another rather than tear down people whom don't agree with you. And I'd like to say to the former speaker, you know, it, it's a passion that we all have. It's already been given a reason. You just don't let it go. It's your thing. It's your motive, whatever motive you've got going. All I'm saying is, can we move forward? Move the city forward with a positive note. We're in a pandemic. We're all going through a lot. And all I ask you is, look at the people who have left us. Learn from them to respect one another for differences that we have and not call it what it is, black, white, brown, or whatever it is. We are all one, and can we move forward? And just take care of one of, one another, because that's what we need to do. And thus, I look forward to doing with a better, positive note. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and you have a good evening.
Kristy Lamb Julian.
Um, yep, I'm here. Um, hey there. This is my first-ever town meeting, and on Zoom nonetheless. Um, I was wondering, did I miss something about, um, I thought we were going to hear some comments about United Against Hate Week, what Pinot was going to do. Um, just I know that from the people I spoke with in my community, my neighborhood, it was something that they would like some feedback on or some direction. Um, I don't know if this is a Q and A or if I just missed it. Um, and thank you for putting this on Zoom.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. Um, just very quickly in response to the last speaker, uh, there is no question-and-answer session during council meetings. There is an agenda that um, the items to be presented. And the discussion about United Against Hate Week, um, related to what the council, the City of Pinot, will be doing was held in a previous meeting tonight. However, there is an agenda item, and it follows, um, public comment. It's our next agenda item, and that is, um, uh, the resolution that the council has to recognize United Against Hate Week. So thank you all for your comments, and, um, if we can go on to the next agenda item, please. We have one proclamation to read, as has been our practice, um, as a council this year. I invite part of my fellow council members to join me. Um, and, um, we are going to proclaim United Against Hate Week, Contrary to the Righteous Hate, for the week of November 14th through 20th, 2021. Whereas the United States Constitution was designed to confer equality on all individuals, regardless of race, national origin, religion, or political beliefs. And whereas nationwide politics, policies, and rhetorics have created a toxic environment that encourages racist, xenophobic, sexist, and homophobic expression by hate groups and individuals. And whereas there has been an alarming increase in hate crimes and divisive speech targeting specific ethnic and religious groups throughout the United States in recent years, and
whereas in 2017, Bay Area cities printed United Against Hate posters to be displayed by residents and businesses in response to hate groups or hate group protests in Berkeley and San Francisco. And whereas United Against Hate Week was created in 2018 as a direct response to the rise in hate, hate crimes, and the increase in bias that poses a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our communities, and
whereas this year, the City of Pinot joins in what has become a national movement as United Against Hate Week has expanded into neighborhoods and cities across the country to raise awareness about the dangers of hate and to promote cooperation among diverse populations. And whereas the City of Pinot finds that it is citizens know, understand the importance of creating inclusion and equity through education and communication to combat mistrust, fear, and insecurity, and
whereas this week of action serves as the reminder of the need for compassion, civility, and respect in all our interactions, and the need to continue to build healthy and resilient communities through diversity.
Now, therefore, I, Norma Martinez Rubin, Mayor of the City of Pinot, County of Contra Costa, State of California, on behalf of the City Council, call upon all citizens and businesses in the City of Pinot to observe the week of November 14th through 20th, 2021 as United Against Hate Week and declare Pinot stands united against hate. Thank you, council members, for joining me in that. We don't have, um, presentations or recognitions this evening. Um, Ms. Stone, are there any public comments related to the proclamation?
No, Mayor, there are no public comments.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next, um, section of our agenda, and that's consent. We have several items on the consent calendar. Again, Ms. Stone, are there any public comments related to any of the matters listed?
Yes, we do have a couple. We'll start with David and Irma Ruport.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Irma Ruport. Um, I have a question on 8J. Mayor, uh, can I go ahead and ask a question?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, on 8J, there's been a lot of talk on Nextdoor regarding the building permits. My question to whom can answer these questions? Number one, how many permits do we have still, uh, not processed? At one time, we heard there were 600. Uh, as to what we're going to do about it, uh, I'd like to know what the status is and what the city manager is doing about that. Because that's what's everybody asking about. Thank you, Mayor.
We have Raphael Menace.
So tonight, I have comments on, um, Item D, Item E, and Item G as well as Item K. So for Item D, the quarterly investment report, this is more a matter of curiosity. I noticed that foreign issues were approximately 1% of the total Section 115 trust investments, and I was curious what those were. Were those just investments in, uh, foreign powers? Um, bond markets like the U.S. government issues, but for countries like France or Mexico and so on? Moving on to the next segment, I noted in page eight of the Item E that under Housing Assets for Resale Fund, it stated that there would be proceeds from the successor agency loan repayment. And I was curious as to how there would be a repayment of loan to the successor agency going to the city before the successor agency was dissolved, because it's my understanding that the successor agency hasn't dissolved yet. With regards to the City Street Improvement Fund, and this is again on page eight, it notes that expenditures plus encumbrances were 62% of budget, which is markedly higher than most of the expenditures noted in the first quarter. And a fair number of times when lower expenditures were noted, it was due to timing of capital investments. So does that mean that City Street Improvement Fund actions have been taken more so than other funds during the first quarter? And then for Segment G on page six out of 60 of the Capital Improvement Plan, I noted that for R through 7010, there was a negative value included for the FY 2020-21 funds for city street improvements again. So does that mean that City Street Improvement Funds were relocated from that project to other projects? And if so, what was the reasoning for that? And for SS 2001, page 22 out of 60, it says that the initial project completion for the sanitary sewer collection system master plan was June 30th, 2021, but it's now been moved out to June 30th, 2022. I was curious as to the reasoning for that delay. And finally, for Item K with regards to implementing the rise in pay steps for various city police officers due to a difference in view between city staff and the police department over allocation of funds in the past, I appreciate the city's efforts to be fair-handed in this matter rather than just going by the letter of actions.
Ms. Stone, can you please continue the clock on Mr. Menace? He did have several items on different, um, questions on different different items. Let's just have him finish his last, um, comments. Thank you.
Mr. Menace?
I was almost done there. The final thing I wanted to say was thank you. That's all.
Thank you. So there were several questions there. I think staff may have taken note, and we'll come back to you for that. Um, Ms. Stone, any additional comments?
Yes. Kristy Lamb Julian.
Hello? Hey there. Um, so I just wanted to second about, um, the permits. I'm in a little bit of a weird limbo in regards to that. We had a geotech engineer come out to our property, and he provided a report, which was then provided to the city planner, which needs a review before if we do need a permit or we don't need a permit. So we're just in this weird limbo spot, but I understand there is a stepping, um, situation. situation. And I understand that there's a huge pile of permits being waiting to get processed. So I just want to know what we can do about that. And just thank you for your time.
Cordell Hindler.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at the number F on the strategic plan. So I was looking at this, and I was like intrigued. There was something I was intrigued by this. And I was like, because if you recall, when Management Partners came back in January, that was working on the strategic plan. And one of the things that I came out, I came across was the idea of a class and comp study. So as I mentioned it at the two meetings ago, so hopefully I will get the status on that. That's all.
We have a telephone caller, last four digits, 2750.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it's Roy Swearingen. And I'm sorry, it's my fault that I was unable to navigate through the system. I thought I was on, and I was not, and there's citizens to be heard. And this is probably not the time, since you're already into your consent calendar. So the only thing I would like to say at this point is that I was very happy to hear the support for the Veterans Day event coming up on the 11th of November. Thank the Rupports and Mr. Rubin for bringing that to the attention of the public. It's very important that the flag is honored in this fashion. And it's good that our community is a participant in that. And I hope they have a very successful event on that. Go back to your meeting. I have other things to say, but I'm going to save it until the next meeting and let it figure out the system. Thank you very much. I'm sorry that I interrupted.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. Okay, for any anyone who is new to joining us during the council meeting, welcome again. And the more you do so, the better you get at it. As well as the more you use the technology that we have been using, the better you get at it. Although every now and then, people notice that even after 15-plus months, I still am unmuted, even though I should be muted. So things happen. We're all doing as best we can via Zoom, and we will continue to do so through, more likely, to the end of the year. So for now, related to consent calendar, there were a number of questions. And if I may, please have staff respond to those before I turn to council members to find out what questions or comments they might have. So I've heard something about permits and the status of those, the volume of those, the status of those, anything related. Very specific request from one member of the public about that as well. City Manager Marie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martinez-Rubin. Happy to report out about this. So we've been sharing information from the city, pushing it out through our City Hall Facebook page, our biweekly administrative report, and the city website about the status of our permit processing. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of inaccurate information circulating, I think particularly on Nextdoor. So we've tried to provide some more accurate information. I'm just going to go ahead and read the latest update that we provided on this matter. You can find this on our City Hall Facebook page. There was never a backlog of 600 permits. I'm not sure where that figure came from. I think at one point, the backlog was as high as 150 permits. And that's been about halved. So I'll go ahead and read the status update. If anybody has any questions after that, happy to respond. So again, on October 21st, we posted this update. Pinot, like many other cities, is continuing to receive an exceptionally high number of building permit applications for residential renovation projects, a phenomenon that began soon after the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. When COVID began, the city implemented new online tools for building permit application and processing so that the city could continue to process permits in a safe manner. And the city has remained open continuously throughout the pandemic for permit processing. Unfortunately, despite new tools and remaining open continuously, this exceptionally high number of applications has increased the average permit processing timeline. Also, coincidentally, the city experienced the departure of two key building staff members during this timeframe. This created a backlog in permit processing. The city has hired new staff, as well as brought in additional temporary assistance, and is addressing the backlog as well as newly received applications. The city has also asked our Building Plan Reviewer to streamline their reviews as much as possible. Because this boom in residential renovations and permit applications is a region-wide phenomenon, there are no additional outside resources that the city can engage to supplement our permanent and temporary staff. The city had a backlog of 150 permits in August 2021, which it has reduced to approximately 80 now. Note that certain types of applications, such as for solar panels, are required by state law to be given priority. The city expects to eliminate the backlog entirely and return to normal processing timelines by the end of the calendar year. The city recognizes that permitting delays can be disappointing and frustrating. We are working as efficiently and diligently as possible to expeditiously process all permits. We're fortunate that so many members of our community are able to invest in their properties, and we appreciate applicants' patience. So yes, in fact, we have had a backlog. As I noted, it's been a region-wide and statewide phenomenon that there was an increase in applications, particularly for residential remodel projects around the same time as the onset of COVID. That struck some as counterintuitive and was certainly unexpected. So we had this increase in number of applications while we were trying to figure out new ways of doing work. Unfortunately, we had the transition in staff, and we're not very deeply staffed. So that set us back a little bit. But we've put all of the available resources to the task and are working through the backlog. And we've changed some of our notification procedures as well. So there are no additional resources that we can draw in. This is a statewide phenomenon. Everybody who works in construction, permit processing, is fully engaged. So we can't bring in any additional temporary staff. We just need to work through it. Our new staff have been onboarded. They're excellent. I encourage you to check in with them. They are being diligent and somewhat stringent in how they're processing the permits so that they can be as efficient as possible. But feel free to reach out to them and get an update on the status of their permit. And feel free to email me or email them, check in with them, to find out about the status of your particular permit. I think that answers all the questions. Let me know if you need anything more.
Thank you, City Manager Marie. And I want to add that as much as we appreciate receiving email from members of the public with regard to some of the processes in the city, such as permit processing, our response to anyone sending us email related to permits is going to be, thank you. We will inform staff about this. But essentially, as council members, we cannot move things any more quickly than what staff is able to do. So just to let you know that sometimes, as well in responding to email, it may not be the most satisfying answer that people receive. However, it is an acknowledgement, having received that email, and likely as well involving the staff that do the work to try to provide answers about what services are being conducted as best as possible to continue the service that's expected by members of the public. So thank you for your report back. Any availability, City Manager Marie? And there were several other questions related to Items on Consent Calendar. I think some of them go to Director Gilery to answer. There was a question about investments that related to Item D, a question about repayment to the loan, repayment of a loan to the successor agency, even though the successor agency has not yet dissolved, and about the timing of expenditures related to street improvements. That's what I have on my notes. You may have more details, so we can get some answers to those questions. Thank you.
Sure. Director Gilery, if you would, about the investment and budget questions?
Sure. So the question on AD related to foreign issues, they are 1% of the investments in the pension trust fund. And there are only two investments there, which is why it's only at 1%. And those issuers are located in Canada. And those are banks in Canada. So our investment policy, both the city's policy and the separate investment policy just for the pension trust, limits foreign issues. So we're within the guidelines of our policies, which is why it's pretty low at 1% for the foreign issues. For 8E related to the repayment of the loan by the successor agency, so there was a loan agreement between the successor agency and the housing department. And that was, the repayment is for the Supplemental Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, or what is known as the CRAF Fund. So that's what that repayment is for. And it is built into the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or what is known as ROPS, for the successor agency. So that's already programmed there. And then for the item on the City Street Improvements Fund, if I understood the question right, I believe Mr. Menes, his question was around the encumbrances in that fund. And he also mentioned in comparison to quarter one, I just wanted to clarify that this report is the first quarter report. So he may have been comparing it to the fourth quarter report, which was for fiscal year 2021. In any case, the spending and the encumbrances are based on the actual projects. So things that weren't completed in the last fiscal year, those encumbrances rolled over to the new fiscal year. So we'll have a rollover from the previous year of unliquidated encumbrances, plus any new encumbrances, which is why it increased from the fourth quarter to the first quarter of 2122. And hopefully that answers his question. If not, he's always welcome to send me an email, and I can provide more information on this or any of the other items as well.
Thank you. There were a couple more questions, and I think these go to City Manager Marie. One of them was related to the CIP and the status of oh, let's see, the reasoning behind something on page 60 of CIP, street improvements, it's either for you, Mr. Marie, or Ms. Carr? And the other was a classification compensation study, the status of that.
So I'll leave it to Ms. Carr to answer the CIP question. While I'm talking, I'll mention the class and comp. So one of the strategies included in the strategic plan that the City Council adopted is to develop an employee engagement, attraction, retention, and engagement plan that involves classification and compensation analysis. So that's, we're working on, that's a single strategy that has a number of components. And we've been working on different components over time. I believe that the member of the public who commented had suggested in the past using a specific firm to complete a class and comp study. We wouldn't normally approach it that way per our procurement policies. But we are doing class and comp studies for all classifications at the city. So we're definitely going to do that as part of our engagement, attraction, and retention effort. So that will be handled and taken care of, I believe, to be completed this fiscal year. With that, Ms. Carr, can you comment on the CIP question, please?
Yes. If I understood it correctly, I believe the question was the negative figure in front of Fund 325 in the CIP. So there's one project. It's particularly the San Pablo Avenue Bridge Project. And we may see this negative sign in front of these projects in the future. But basically, the receipt of certain grants and reimbursements typically take place after a contract award. So we program other city funding in the front end to finance those projects until we get a credit back. So for that San Pablo Avenue Bridge Project, it is funded through the Highway Bridge Program. When we submit a reimbursement request, then when the funds come in, they get credited to Fund 325. And the second question, I believe, was related to the development of our Sanitary Sewer Collection Master Plan and in relation to why the revised date is through the end of this fiscal year. We awarded that contract in September of 2020. It takes a while to execute contract documents because we need to make sure insurance is met and all of the contract provisions are satisfied. And most recently, we had to collect data. A hydraulic model was prepared. Currently, we're focusing on the very first project as a result of that master plan, which will be upgrades to Pinion. We've had some SSOs in that area. So we are focusing our time on that project, and we anticipate completing that master plan through the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have other notes. Does staff have other notes for the questions that were?
Those are the ones that I noted and recalled. I think we've covered them all.
Okay, thank you. I will now turn to council to ask whether council members have any questions on any of the matters under consent calendar. And I see Councilmember Toms and Councilmember Tave. And Councilmember Toms, you're usually a better keeper of the order when those hands are raised.
I think so, yeah. I'd like to pull Item J. I have several questions and potentially a modification. But if there's no other questions, I'm prepared to move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Mayor, just a, I do see that we still have two hands up in our attendee column here. So I want to make sure that we've heard all of the public comment before we move on to a motion.
Yes, you beat me to it. We have Kristi Lam Julian.
Ms. Julian, again, this will be a question related to Items on Consent Calendar, please.
Hi there. I was just wondering if it was for Item number, letter K, about the settlement agreement between the city and the police department? Was that noted somewhere for the public record to review? And this is not related, but is there a way for us to get additional United Against Hate posters to put out around the city for the community? Thanks.
And there is also Debbie.
Good evening. I had just a real quick question, and I anticipate someone will get back to me on it. What has to do with the warrants? And it's the one for Kennedy and Associates in the amount of $8,453.50. What just brought it to mind is that payments were made, several payments, for the City Surveyor on September 21, Apian Way Maps, Vista Woods, SWCP. And I was just wondering if someone at some point could give me an explanation as to what this is for? And lastly, also J, my question was how are the funds going to be tracked? Or the permit fees that are going to be tracked that aren't being paid until everything is reviewed? How is that process going to take place to ensure that we collect all back permit fees? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Stone, we have been learning. One more sweep before we say there are no more public comments, or if there are, let us know.
Going on last week. And there are no more public comments.
Okay, I will now close the public comment period from any items, any matters under consent calendar, and continuing to turn to council members. Councilmember Toms had pulled Item J. Was there anything further, Councilmember Toms? Oh, I, no? Okay. And now Councilmember Tave?
Yeah, my question is related to 8D. I'm wondering if, you know, we saw the $5,498,209. And I think that was a, you know, a shortfall or a deficit. And I remember in our forecast, we had anticipated a dip as we were to hire people. We talked about it on 615 when we went over our five-year forecast. And I'm just wondering, there was an anticipation of about $2.3 billion what we were estimating, but this is showing a larger number. I'm wondering if you could add some clarity? I'm wondering if you could add some clarity or, you know, connect those two as to why we're higher than what we anticipated?
Thank you. Any more questions, Councilmember Tave?
That was, that was the only one. And then the, if you could provide just a little bit for the public on the increase in the LIF. Just some.
Increase in the what?
The LIF fund? Because on page, I'll give it for you. It was in the report.
Yeah. Okay, sounds like, sounds like Director Gilery, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, okay, there were, let's, and let's wrap up the questions from members of the public and then we'll go back to council members' questions, please. So there was a question about this, related to Item A to B, settlement agreement?
So I think there was a question about the warrants first. There was a check paid to Kennedy Associates. That's a consulting firm that helps us with our stormwater program, including the stormwater, reviewing stormwater provisions of new development projects. So if there was a reference to a payment for a new development project, I think that's the new one on Apian Way that's being proposed across the street from Penole Middle School. And payment was for review of the SWCP. I think that's the stormwater control plan for that development. So that's what Kennedy Associates does for the city. If Ms. Long would like to contact me or Community Development or Director Gilery, who can provide her with any other information she wants on that. Assistant City Manager De La Rosa was hoping to have the opportunity to talk a little bit more about what is planned for United Against Hate Week, including where residents can pick up posters. And I would invite him to do that also. Assistant City Manager De La Rosa, is a settlement agreement on a labor matter public record that can be accessed, or is it a confidential item? So you can answer that question as well, if you would.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Murray. With regards to the United Against Hate Week, to me to direct an answer to the citizens' question, you can pick up posters at City Hall or Police Department. We have some at the library. We have some at the senior center, Tiny Tots Building. So we have various posters throughout the city where individuals can pick up posters. We also have placed some posters in the downtown area. But if you'd like, just come to City Hall, second floor, pick up some posters. We'll be happy to provide you as many posters as you need, so you could distribute throughout the community. Any effort to get those, that information out would be appreciated. With regards to Agenda Item 8K, the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement is public knowledge. We do have that as part of the document. The working documents that we utilize for the settlement agreement are working documents. Those are not included in the staff report. I will defer to our attorney to see if those are available for public. However, I will note that this is a settlement agreement. So we negotiated a value on how to conclude this grievance. And it doesn't necessarily tie to a specific dollar amount for each individual.
So I'm just to add to that. So the settlement agreement itself is included in the agenda packet. And that's negotiated between the city's negotiator and the representative for whatever union we're working with to execute the settlement agreement. You can find that as part of the packet. And there was another question. Councilmember Tave, I think you had a question about the expected use of fund balance, perhaps back with the original proposed budget and the first quarter report? Okay, my Director Gilery got to talk about that.
So the first question was that for Item 8D? I'm sorry, I missed, understood that.
There was a $5,498,209 deficit. And we, when we were doing our budgeting last year towards the end of the year, I'm sorry, when we were doing our forecasting, we anticipated a dip in the budget this upcoming fiscal year because of expenditures, there was salaries, people getting hired. And there was a couple other items that were on there. But I remember that number being close to $2 million. I think it was like $2.3 or $2.9, if I recall. But this is significantly higher, almost double. And I'm just wondering what that delta was, from what we had anticipated versus where we are right now? And if you can kind of connect those two dots for us?
Yeah, so the reporting 8D is the first quarter investment summary. So the $5.4 million that you see there, that's just a snapshot in time. This is all of the pooled cash. And what that represents is what we've spent for the first quarter. And the majority of that was for the successor agency debt payment. Because this pooled cash includes all funds, not just the general fund. So this is everything. It's more of the operating cash flow, it's not budget.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem. And I think your other question was on the increase in LIF? Okay, so. Yes, we had about $3.5 million in additional idle funds that would have otherwise set in our regular money market bank account, drawing very minimal interest. So we moved an additional $3.5 million over to LIF, just to gain some additional interest there. And just so it is clear, LIF is very liquid. So we can withdraw from that fund at any time if we needed to for operational costs. But we do maintain our balances in the regular bank accounts for the day-to-day operations. So this was just additional idle funds that we moved over just to gain more interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Was a question about how fees would be tracked, related to Item J, A to J, suspension of building permits and the discussions to be had or the processes to be created so that there is a tracking of fees? Was that question answered?
It wasn't. My understanding is that item might be pulled, so we might have a discussion of that. But very briefly, we have a standard permit tracking system that has a budget function, a finance function tied to it. So we'd be tracking the payments of permits, you know, in the future in the same way that we track all of our other payables right now. So we have all sorts of different items, financial items that the city is owed payment for. And we have a standard, you know, generally accepted accounting principle approach to tracking those. So I don't think it creates any, it would be a temporary change in procedure, but it's not a complicated change in procedure. We have all the systems in place to allow us to handle that without any unusual administrative burden or challenge.
Okay, thank you for offering that explanation. And we have pulled Item J for further discussion. I just would like to make the correction to Item 8A, related to the minutes of October 9, which were subspreads where I believe sent after the initial meeting packet. So for the minutes of October 9, on page 5, fourth paragraph, there's mention of Mr. Ruben. Please change that name to Mr. Rupert. Mr. Ruben was not present during the meeting of October 9. Page 13, sixth paragraph, sixth line, there's mention of the Penole Chamber of Commerce. There is no Penole Chamber of Commerce. Please revise that to read Bayfront Chamber of Commerce. Other than that, the minutes, my review were okay for October 9.
Thank you, Mayor, made note of those revisions.
Thank you. So may I have a motion to approve consent items other than J?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move consent items A through I and K.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Toms?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy? I'm sorry, he's not with us. Councilmember Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. So now we return to Item 8J. And Councilmember Toms?
Yes. Couple items. I am concerned about waiving all building permit fees because we will have to then go back after the fact and collect fees, you know, after the issue. And we are already backed up in our building department. So I'm wondering if we can identify that we have unusually high fees that have been identified for new residential units? And if perhaps those are the ones that we could defer, just new residential units? And that way, we don't have to have staff spending time on collecting building permit fees for water heaters, new windows, you know, all of these miscellaneous things that will take up a lot of staff time and perhaps push us even further behind on review?
So I'm happy to respond to that. I don't think, relative to the complete amount of work that's required to process a building permit and related permits and review, I don't think the matter of doing a follow-up to collect the fees prior to a final inspection will create a lot of additional work for staff. So I don't expect that the process that is being proposed is going to bog down what we already know is a, you know, a labor-intensive process. It's, this relates to any project that needs a building permit, so not every project. But I think there's a desire and a need to be consistent across all of the different parties that this might apply to. So if we think that a temporary suspension, just to, I know it's semantics, but it's not, we're not waiving the fees, the fees will ultimately all be due. We're just suspending the collection of those fees until somebody, until either the new fee schedule is adopted. That may include changes to the building permit fee, it may not. Or when somebody wants to have a final inspection. So it's, you know, it's a general principle and a public administration, also legal one, that we want to provide all equally situated parties. That means anybody applying for a building permit with the same type of approach. So I don't feel like, and we're not recommending that we have thresholds for building project sizes or any other kinds of thresholds. We want to treat everybody consistently. We have talked about, and the resolution outlines our intention to get a signed agreement from everybody who would like to have their fee payment suspended. So we're hopeful that we're going to, it's going to be a straightforward process to collect the fees afterwards. And again, we're going to make a final inspection contingent upon the payment of the fees. So I think that's a very strong incentive to get people to come by paying the fees.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, so something like a water heater, is that considered a plumbing permit? And is that included? Or, and then my follow-up question to that is, you know, if that's something that's, permit is issued and then it's final a week later, you know, are we going to then have them collect the fee, even though we're in this same deferral period?
We're going to require that they pay the fee prior to getting a final inspection. So even if we're in this suspension period, if the fees are updated and they're lower, we will be rebating people the difference of that amount. So it's important, we think, as an incentive to get people to pay the fee, to hold off during their final inspection until they've paid the fee. Otherwise, you know, people will have completed their project and be off and concentrating on other things if we don't collect the fee before the final inspection, at which point we think it might, you know, add some administrative burden to doing the collection. And this seems like an appropriate opportunity to introduce a new member of our city team. Wasn't necessarily intending to do that, but we have a new Community Development Director who started on Monday, that would be yesterday, Lily Whalen, and is going to be overseeing community development, which includes building planning, code enforcement, affordable housing, and economic development. And I'll invite Lily to provide some comments if she would like. Oh, hello, there you are, lovely background, by the way. As well as our Community Development Consultant, Farhad, to provide additional information regarding what types of projects would be impacted by this building permit fee deferral. Lily, do you want to talk about the types of projects that will be captured and will not be captured through this?
Sure, good evening and hello, Madam Mayor, council members. I am delighted to be working on the Penole team, very excited to be here. My understanding is that all building permits would be affected by the suspension of the collection of the fees. So that would be the small projects to the big projects. Any type of project that needs a building permit, including water heaters, you know, re-roof projects, those would be impacted by this proposal. I don't know if Farhad has any additional insight or information to share?
You're muted, Ms. Mary.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As the city manager indicated, the suspension for the collection of the building permit fees applies to our projects granted. As Councilmember Toms indicated, that there are going to be many small projects. But as it was mentioned by city manager, that the fee would be collected prior to the final inspection or the final step of the permit. However, this is, this is a step to take in order for, to address the fee issue regarding very large projects, as some of you have, are applying in that regard. And within the six-month period that is mentioned in Part J of the consent calendar, there will be a fee study. And whether it's going to be affected or not, based on what is existing since 2012, then the, those exact fees would be charged to the applicant, to a large applicant. Large meaning, larger projects, specifically the five of them are, that have been applied for. The first one that was approved by the Planning Commission last month, which is Vista Views. And those fees would be collected unless the study indicates that our fees are more than what they should be and there's going to be, the study is going to be forwarded to the city council with a resolution in order to change the fees. Therefore, and thereafter, I should say, that the differentiation between what was submitted as a deposit by large projects and the calculation based on the valuation of the projects that are pending will dictate that the remaining fee needs to be submitted prior to projects being, having a final inspection or being issued the certificate of occupancy.
So, and as I, thank you, Farhad. And as I mentioned, we went, you know, we, concern regarding the existing fee structure was raised by an applicant with a really large project. We thought about whether it'd be possible to make the suspension more targeted. But again, as I mentioned, I think we feel very strongly that it needs to, every single applicant needs to be treated in the same way. There's no, you know, we don't really have a basis to differentiate. If we think that everybody deserves to have their fee collection suspended, then it's fairness, it's fairest and most, I think, appropriate to stick with that. I don't think we have, feel like we as staff have another, any other option or can offer any other approach.
Councilmember Tave, you got your hand raised. Anything different that has already been asked?
So what I wanted to ask was, you know, or just make the statement that I think that it's good that we're doing this going into winter, because we could potentially see a slowdown in construction. So it's probably the best time to do something like this. But I had brought this up for an agenda item in the past, was to have a discussion about the permitting process. Because as Councilmember Toms, I agree with wholeheartedly, that something as simple as a removal place, tree cutting, should be an over-the-counter pay fee and we're done. And then there's a drive-by inspection for a tree or, you know, a water heater as such. If it's being installed or cut by a professional, I think that we can rely on that professional's ability to perform the job. So I'd like to have this discussion. So I'd like to have this discussion, a larger discussion about permitting at some point. But given this, do we anticipate how much time or how many permits we, you know, do we expect during this window? The window, I believe, is between now and April 30th, right? So it'd be like May. Do we know how, what kind of volume we, we historically have had and how we're going to weather that?
So we, it's a little bit uncharted territory because we're in the midst of an anticipated boom related to COVID. So we didn't see that coming in the first place. I don't think anybody else did and everybody's experiencing that. So we don't have a forecast. I think you're, you know, you're right that traditionally this has been a slower period of the year and so we'll have fewer permits than we otherwise would have. In terms of the question about weathering, I don't think, this is a cash flow issue but not a budget issue, we don't think. I mean, we expected all the permits that are going to be, amounts that are going to be due are going to be paid. So although we're deferring them, that's not, you know, we just looked at the investment report, the city has plenty of cash to, you know, to be able to navigate this period. We have much larger.
I'm sorry, but I wasn't really talking about cash, I was more talking about customer service. Over the past six months, I, I personally received frustrated residents with the permit process. What I'm trying to do is how are we going to ease that? Because permitting is a good thing. We want people building in Penole, we want them adding value to their home, we want our business owners doing this. What I, we, we want these developments to be coming in and done, and done carefully, what I, and with the oversight of the city. What I'm trying to understand is how are we going to reestablish the connection and trust of the community in our permit process? Like, how do we?
Okay, so I don't, I don't see the connection between that and this, the issue of suspending the fee payments. We provided a lot of information about where we're at in the building permit process. I don't recall a request for a future agenda item related to our building permit process other than the update that we provided at a council meeting a couple of meetings ago. I, like I mentioned, so as many of you know, I have personally gone through a homeowner patient over the course of the past year. I can tell you firsthand that I had a much more challenging experience working in the community in which I reside, than is the case in Penole. We stayed open throughout the pandemic. Unfortunately, we had the departure of a couple of key staff people. We're a very lean bench here in Penole, that's a source of pride but also challenge. We're very lean, but that means we don't have a deep bench, so that was an unfortunate occurrence. We're on track to eliminate the backlog by the end of this year. So I don't, you know, I, it is not my sense, although one of the responsibilities of Ms. Whelan is our new community development director. As you know, we've been without a full-time dedicated community development director for many, many years. One of our ambitions and expectations in filling that position was that we have more bandwidth there who can work on and look at that process improvements. But I don't have the sense that the process is broken in general. I think we have this, essentially the same permitting process that all of our peers have. We do notice some idiosyncrasies sometimes, and we notice them, like we do in this permitting, the, the permit fee matter, we look into it in detail and come back to the council with recommendations. So if the council would like to have a future agenda item on the permitting process, you know, we can, you know, feel free to suggest that. I think our permitting process is like most others. Every single city's permitting process has been strained due to this bumper set of applications and having to work remotely. So I don't think we're unusual. If you're a homeowner in any community, right, and perhaps you've done a project in the past and now you're trying to get it done now, it's slower, communication is more challenging, we've got people working remotely. So the experience, without any question, is more challenging than it has been in the past. But it really is the same here in Penole as elsewhere. I don't know what comfort that provides, but we really are paying a lot of attention. We did bring in temporary staff, we've made some process improvements. I think we really are on track. The, you know, there's, there've been quite a bit of misstatements in the public about the situation. So we're on track to get those, the permit backlog extinguished by the end of this calendar year and are working full steam ahead. So I don't think there's anything to be changed, although of course, we'd be happy to have a future council agenda item to discuss it. And I don't think, you know, again, I don't think there's going to, any additional backlog is going to be created by doing what we feel we must do, which is do this renewed analysis of our fee structure.
Okay, well, I would just say that I think we, I'll, I'll be happy to suggest it again when we get to future agenda items, because I, I'd like to really understand the experience that people have going to the permit counter for something as simple as a tree cutting, all the way up to these larger developments with that, and, and more so what we're doing now and what the public is experiencing, right? And try to get an understanding of that. Thank you, thank you for the report, welcome board, Lily.
Councilmember Tombs?
Yeah, I just wanted to return to the question about the building permit fees that are higher than some jurisdictions have been really narrow in that therefore new residential units and particularly new multifamily residential units. Is that accurate?
No, I don't, I'm not aware of any kind of a particular distinction like that. It's, it was, the concern regarding the building permits was brought to our attention by an applicant with a very large project, but that project pays the same building permit fee that anybody who needs a building permit does. So that's who mentioned the concern to us, but I, you know, I don't know that it's, as I said, we have the same building permit fee for any kind of a, a project.
Right, but it was the, it was really the larger projects is where we're really out of, you know, out of whack with our neighboring jurisdictions. Is that correct? Or is it like with water heaters and is it across the board?
So we have a straight percentage, the building permit fee is a straight percentage of the value of the project. And we don't have a tier, what's called a tiered system, but no, I mean, it's, we have a percentage that we charge based on the value of the, the project, peers have a difference. And so the, you know, the discrepancy is smaller on a project that has a smaller total cost, but it's the same structure that we're applying to all of our projects. So there really isn't any distinction in that regard, I don't think.
Okay. As I mentioned, I do have concerns about, you know, this being about six months where we're going to go back and if you have somebody, if you have a contractor who is pulling a building permit and they're done with their project, they want to be done. They don't want to have to like figure out paying fees later on and, you know, maybe they don't, they're not officially finished with their project. So that's why I'm trying to narrow which ones are deferred. So I, I would just maybe encourage us to, you know, try to accelerate the study so that it's a shorter window in which we're having to return to collect these fees.
Yeah, certainly, we all have an interest in getting to the completed study sooner rather than later. You know that we will be conducting this as part of a city-wide, department-wide master fee study, which had already been scheduled because it was a strategic plan strategy. It does take, it will be a deep dive into our cost structure, so it can't be, you know, it's going to take some time. The, you know, a contractor is pulling a permit on behalf of a property owner, they're not doing it for themselves. So although a contractor might complete a project and be off to the next project, the property owner is still the property owner. And so we will always maintain the, the communication with them and they'll be the ones who will be responsible for paying for the permit. So, you know, it's, I'm not, it is true that sometimes contractors pull the permits on behalf of the property owner, but ultimately it's the responsibility of the property owner. They have some investments in their property and in the community, so I think they're backstopping this whole permit fee collection effort. And so I think we feel fairly confident that we'll ultimately be able to collect the fees at the same, you know, level that we normally do.
Okay, I'd be interested to, you know, see how that, see how that goes.
Yeah, and if we, as I mentioned, I think we explored different options. If there are a way to narrow the application of the suspension, we would like to do that too, because I think the greatest concern has been raised by some of the large project applicants, but we just don't think that's allowable frankly.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'll move the item.
Thank you, I actually have a question based on something that you said, Councilmember Tombs, just so that I can understand what you were wanting to minimize. Am I understanding correctly that during this period of study, for someone who has an outstanding permit, that is, they haven't gone through the entire process, therefore there's a final inspection yet to be had, it's, it's, is the project essentially on hold? What I can think of is that if a final inspection is required before occupying a home, for example, on a smaller project, I'm wondering in practice what that means, in reality, what that means. Was that the concern, Councilmember Tombs, that someone?
It's that and the amount of staff time it takes to circle back with that property owner. You might be dealing with a property owner that had a contractor that pulled the permits that thought everything was okay, and yet now they're being asked to pay and they weren't aware of how much to pay or they thought they were, you know, had a permit. It's, you know, it's really the staff time to follow up on stuff, follow up on these issues.
Okay, so thanks for clarifying. So I think staff are more than aware of how difficult that is for members of the public to bear. And also, I think we are also aware as councilpeople that the communication between the contractor who actually pulls a permit and their client, the homeowner, is sometimes different from the kind of communication that is had between the contractor and the city. So we can't do too much about that, but I would also support the, the desire to minimize the burden on the, on the, on the property owners to the extent possible, in, in particular the smaller projects. I think staff has heard of us on that.
Thank you. We did talk today about some communication pieces that we'll be sharing with applicants to explain this process so that everybody fully understands why we're going through this effort and the benefits. So I, we're hoping that people will be well informed about this, this temporary provision and frankly, we don't feel like we, there's any other way to, to handle it. This feels like the only way to look into an issue that concerns us and we want to make sure that we have right.
I realize that with any new circumstances and many of those we've been facing this year and will continue to face, we don't have to have it perfect, let's just, let's just do something to remedy what we know needs, needs remedy. So thank you, staff in advance, for all of that. I want to identify one particular thing on the resolution on Attachment A related to this item, on the first page, in the section that reads, now therefore be it resolved, entry number four, third line, there's a statement that reads, well, entry number four, as a, as a part of the conditional suspension of a collection of fees, the community development department will continue to process and issue permits under an agreement that will require applicants to repay building fees, et cetera. So just want to hear what repaying building fees means, given that the resolution is to suspend fees and therefore no fees would have been paid to begin with. I just, I interpret that as if I were an applicant requiring a permit, I might be asked to pay again. So please, please help me understand that.
Yeah, I think that's, thank you for reading with a careful eye, Mayor Martinez Ruben, I think it would be more accurate for that to read, require applicants to pay building fees, it's not repay, you're correct.
Okay, that's, yes, so as long as it doesn't, that language doesn't transfer on to whatever other documents you'll have to prepare, including all the pieces of information to, to property owners, thank you.
Sure, I, I mean, I think we would, staff would appreciate an amendment, the recommendation for an amendment to that so that it reads pay rather than repay. So if the council would like to amend the resolution in that way before adopting, we would, I think that's an improvement.
Thank you. So again, Councilmember Tombs, you want to take this?
Yeah, just where we're talking about conditionally suspending collection, should we say conditionally defer? And I think that's a question of our city attorney.
I think that either can work. You know, from a practical standpoint, the city will be suspending collections, so there will be no collections, and that's the direction that's being provided to staff. You know, I think both are true, that it's, it's also, you know, we're deferring the collection as well. I don't think there's any legal significance to a, to a language change there. Yeah, I think, I think either would work.
Okay, well, I'll move, I'll move the item with the earlier suggestion about the payment of the fees instead of repayment of the fees.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Tombs?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Ruben?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Councilmember Murphy has joined us. Okay, I think we got through consent calendar, so thank you everyone for your comments, questions, and staff are responding to those. Okay, we move on to the next order of business.
Madam Mayor, can we take item 10B ahead of time? We have, we do have a guest who may want, who wants to speak on that item.
Okay, one moment. You want to go ahead and make a motion? Councilmember Tombs?
I don't know if we need a motion, but if we do, can we take old business out of order, covering item 10B first?
Okay. I heard a second. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Tombs?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy? Give him a minute, he's dialed in from a distance, Councilmember Murphy. I'll come back around, Councilmember Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez Ruben?
Yes.
And then I'm going to call Councilmember Murphy.
Yes, sorry about my internet.
Thank you, unanimous, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we will now turn to item 10B, and if I may have a slide on that so the public may see that. And this is a presentation on Measure X, an update on Measure X. And staff will present a report, that's Fire Chief Winkup. And this evening, we also have Supervisor John Joya alongside Chief Winkup, and let me make sure that he is on.
I am here, but I have my video off since I'm driving, and so, but I am here, yes.
Wonderful, thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, so as a dual, a dynamic dual, please take it away and let us know what we ought to know about Measure X. And between the two of you, you can determine who, who shall go first.
Mayor, I'll be glad to go first, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, and members of the public. Tonight, I had been scheduled to give an update on county tax measure X, specifically as it relates to county fire service and fire services in Penole. This update was to follow what was scheduled to be the County Board of Supervisors' discussion on Measure X funding earlier in the day. And my update was to be a report on the discussions which took place at that supervisors' meeting. That agenda item on the Board of Supervisors' calendar was subsequently rescheduled for November 16th. So consequently, there wasn't going to be a whole lot to report back tonight, but I will provide a report at our next council meeting, presumably after the County Board of Supervisors' meeting. However, Supervisor John Joya has been gracious enough to make himself available to speak with us tonight regarding Measure X. So without further delay, I will turn it over to Supervisor Joya.
Thank you, Chief, and I want to first start by saying, we really appreciate the partnership between Contra Costa Consolidated Fire District and Penole Fire. I think there's been a great partnership and I know the chiefs work well together. So I, I wanted to give you an update about what will come before the Board of Supervisors' on November 16th. And I'll start with saying that we first thank the voters of Contra Costa for supporting Measure X last year. Measure X is a new half-cent sales tax, which will result in about $100 million a year in new revenue to the county, but will get used countywide, including working with jurisdictions other than the county. And when the measure passed, we established a, a And when the measure passed, we established a, a Citizens Advisory Committee to, which is countywide, to make recommendations about the, about the measure to the County Board of Supervisors, who ultimately is responsible for allocating the funding. And that committee was very hardworking, and it met for several months, heard presentations from many county departments, including from fire agencies and fire chiefs, and from committee organizations. And while they're not responsible for making recommendations on specific dollar amounts, they were charged with making recommendations by priority area. And, you know, when we did campaign, we did say that Measure X would get used for fire and emergency medical. That was definitely a representation to the voters and a lot of strong support in, for that. So, the, the committee made a presentation last week, last Tuesday, to the Board of Supervisors, and as your chief said, we were going to have this come back to our board November 2nd, but decided we really needed, the staff needed more time to put specifics together to come back to the board on November 16th. There were recommendations made with regard to improving fire service. I indicated support at our meeting for improving fire service both in West County as well as in East County. Our, our staff and the county administrator's office is putting together the staff report as we speak, which will be out the next few days, early next week. And so, let me share with you the direction this is heading. And I, I've been working with our, with our finance director for the county on this. There will be a proposal to support reopening the Pinole Valley Fire Station using $2 million of annual allocation from the county revenue from Measure X. And I know that our fire chief and your chief are working together to develop an operational model of how that would work, realizing that the city of Pinole would be putting some money into that as well, knowing that it costs, I guess, around numbers around $3.5 million a year to fund a fire station, but that there'd be an ongoing allocation from Measure X of 2 million. And again, this is coming before the Board of Supervisors on November 16th. I'll tell you about, a little more about advocating on that, and, and I'm hopeful that this will be in the staff, in the staff recommendation, given the input from myself and some other supervisors. There will also be $4.5 million countywide for wildland fire prevention. We all know that there are urban interface areas between our housing, our residential communities, and, and, and areas that are like East Bay regional parklands, East Bay mud watershed lands that pose fire risks. So, of that 4.5 million, 2.5 million would be dedicated to a year-round hand crew, not just in the Consolidated Fire District, but countywide where it is most needed. It would be looking on clearing vegetation to reduce fire risk in those wildland interface areas, which would include areas of Pinole and Pinole Valley. In addition, there'd be about $5 million, excuse me, $2 million annual for larger fuel break projects. And I am, I'm advocating for some of that funding, and I, I think that will be a proposal to be developed that could be available for homeowners who have financial needs, who may need assistance in clearing vegetation on their property. We've heard from a number of homeowners about the fact that they do not have funding to be able to clear vegetation in their property, and we're actually hearing examples of where insurance companies are canceling fire insurance for, for property owners because one of their neighbors hasn't cleared their brush, because it is a, it is a fire, it is a fire hazard. We, we want to avoid that from happening. So, basically, that this 4.5 million for wildland fire would be an annual allocation, and then the 2 million for Pinole Fire. Obviously, you're welcome to advocate that to the Board of Supervisors, both from a city perspective and individual perspective and residents. And, you know, we may make the allocation decisions on the 16th, or we may take more time. But, so I thought it was really important for you all to know this, because both those allocations, there's a lot of other allocations as well, including more funding. We're actually looking at $12 million a year for a housing trust fund to address services and housing for people who are homeless, for example, lots of other allocations, including health. And so, but I wanted to focus on the fire issues, because I know we've been working in partnership, you know, with, with, with your city and your fire department, and we appreciate that partnership. So, with that, I'll just open it to any, any questions that, that you have, and I will make sure that you get the staff report when it is available, which will basically go into what I, what I just mentioned.
Thank you Supervisor Joya. So, ordinarily, I turn to the public first for public comments on this agenda item, and then I'll turn back to council. So, Ms. Stone, are there any public comments on Item 10B?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a couple of comments. We'll start with Debbie.
Hi, and this is to John. John, thank you for addressing the 2 million for homeowners. I think that that is long overdue. As you know, there's a lot of overgrown brush, particularly in the El Sabrante area and Pinole as well. So, thank you for doing that. I have a question, though. On the 2 million that you're looking to allocate to reopen 74, will that have a built-in escalator clause in it? As we know, costs are not stagnant, whether it's related to health and welfare, retirement salaries, will it? Because 2 million in year one might need an allocation of another 2 million, but by year five, it needs 3 million. And so, we have some assurances that we can manage still the sustainability.
That's a really good question. So, here's, the good news is that we, every year, we will revisit our allocations. There will be some allocations that will be ongoing, some that will be short-term, some that will be even just for the year, one-time dollars. I think I foresee that this is an ongoing allocation, which means we can, I will raise that issue on the 16th. I think that's a good point. I, I think the intention would be if, if, if the purpose of this is to close the gap to allow the station to reopen, then, you know, let's say, two years from now, that gap is 2.1 million, I think the Board, the Board of Supervisors can very well increase the funding. So, this funding is not meant to, to just be static. It can get revisited every year as your chief and, you know, and your city and our, and the county work together on this, you know, because, you know, you may end up having to increase some funding as well. So, yes, I think that is subject to getting revisited. I'll raise that issue. I think it's a similar issue with the East County. And there is flexibility. It's a general fund measure, and, you know, we're going to revisit these allocations every year.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
And by the way, oh, one other point, not all of that 2 million will get used directly to the homeowners. I think that 2 million is meant to be for fuel reduction, major fuel reduction projects, some of which could involve paying a contractor to, let's say, do a major fuel reduction in a particular area where it's most needed, including a program that would address, that would address, that would help homeowners, as you say, areas in Pinole or El Sabrante, and frankly, a lot of that's also up in the El Cerrito, Kensington Hills, things like that.
I know that Arinda had a great project where if you were able to put all of your brush, your cuttings, your limbs, they would come and pick it up and, you know, mulch it for you. And that alone was a big help, I think, for that community, and I know that in many cases, that's why people don't cut down, because they don't know how to get rid of what they cut.
But we, and again, this money will get used countywide. This will get used countywide.
Okay, thank you, John.
Rafael Minas?
I'd like to join Debbie, and thank you, John, for joining us. Hopefully, you're driving safely while conversing with us. And I had a question about the, I guess, structure of the staff report. Like, let's say the 16th comes around, and the final staff report that's ultimately released ends up recommending different values, like, let's say, it says, we should do maybe 1 million for reopening Station 74, or nothing at all. At that point, would making public comment to the countywide Board of Supervisors' meeting be likely to have an effect? How, how much?
Yeah, right. Good, yes. Uh, good question, and I, I just got to my house, so I, I put my video on, hopefully it works, so I don't know if it's on, but if, if, I don't know if you, anyway, I mean, you can hear me, correct?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Good, okay. So, the, the whole purpose here is to reopen the station. And, and I know our two chiefs are working together on this. So, I, I think the amount that's been identified is the amount that has been identified in the mutual conversations between your chief and our chief. So, I, I don't expect that the amount's going to be less than what is needed. If Pinole says, this is what we can bring to the table, and they, and this is the gap we have, the ideas for the county to bring, whatever is the gap to the table. So, I think that's, that's really the, that's really the, that's the intention. So, but of course, you're all welcome to participate and give input to, to the county, for sure.
Stone, are there further comments, other comments?
Yes, David and Irma report.
Okay, and so Supervisor Joya, what we'll do is we, you know, we have the timer for the public comments, so we'll let them complete.
Oh, yes, okay.
Thank you. So, it's not back and forth? Thank you.
Sure. Sorry about that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Supervisor Joya, I really appreciate you contacting me this weekend. I read an article a couple of weeks ago, and I came to the council, I was very upset, saying that the group and, and the people down at the county were only thinking about the East County, and that was written. And I really appreciate you clearing and clarifying what happened and what everybody is thinking. I appreciate you coming tonight. I live in the site where my representative is Supervisor Glover, but I really appreciate you's always been supportive of all the residents of Pinole. You've been there for all of us, and to the fire chief too, and to everybody that had a part of this. I was just very upset, because at the last minute, we heard about this, I read it in the news, and what happens Supervisor Joya, you got on top of it. And I really appreciate you coming today, and thank you all for agendizing this, clearing the air, and I hope that we can get everybody rallied here in Pinole, send an email, send some contacts to the county supervisors. And again, I'm sorry, but I was very upset a couple of weeks ago, but now, after clearing the air, especially for Fire Station 74 that's been closed at least 10 years or more that I can, I've been, I've been here for over 40 years, and that's all people talk about. Whichever way we open it up, whatever it takes to open it and do something with it, we own the building, and we, I just want to thank everybody involved, and Supervisor Joya, especially to you, for coming out at the last minute, and I really appreciate that you came and reached out to me and, and really made, made it clear that you are for the city of Pinole. Thank you very much.
Kristy Lamb Julian.
Hey there, okay, so the general consensus of the town is to open up the fire station. However, I, as a homeowner, was just a little frustrated to find out that the one acre behind your house actually belonged to us after much back and forth with the city. And then there is a program that helps homeowners to kind of clear the debris, sorry, my five-year-old is here. Hold on, I have to listen. There is a nonprofit program to help homeowners kind of offset and kind of group projects together to clear the brush, to make it safe for our neighborhood, and their funding has been cut.
And make sure to recycle.
And make sure recycle. Has been cut significantly to where the burden falls on the homeowners, where all of a sudden, I have an acre that I need to clear debris from that I was told previously for, what, 10 years that was not ours. It just seems kind of a punch in the gut, where we're trying to do what's best for us for the community, and the funding is cut. This nonprofit that's trying to make it happen for our community doesn't have the monies to kind of group together projects to break down the, the dry grass and, sorry, the kindling to make it safe for everyone, so then the burden doesn't fall just on the Fire Station I'm just wondering if you could touch base on that, or what we can do to allocate some more funds to help homeowners kind of take the charge and help out the community as a whole for this project? Just because fire season is just going to get worse, hotter, and longer, and what can we do to help it out so it doesn't just fall on the fire department, the code enforcement in the city, that we collectively
And make sure they pay water.
Can make it better for everyone? Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. So, with the last comments, both Supervisor Joya and Winkup, I think you can both offer some responses there. So, we'll turn to Supervisor Joya first.
Yeah, I'll offer first, you know, I know there was an article that folks read that led to this, I think led to a perception that Pinole wouldn't be funded. You know, that's always, you know, the issue when there's a newspaper article, sometimes it may not cover everything, and I understand that when one reads the article and the highlight was about East County Fire, it does make residents in West County worried. So, I, I, I thought it was important also to be here to clarify that, that, you know, there's more that goes on, right? As you know this, you're all councilmembers, than what you may read in the newspaper, right? There's a lot more to cover. So, unfortunately, the article maybe didn't capture everything. So, that's, that's one reason, you know, just to let you all know. Second, you know, this 4.5 million dollars will get used by both a year-round, large hand crew that will be, you know, again, it's 14 personnel, that will actually be deployed around the county to clear vegetation, as well as hire contractors on large projects, bring in equipment, and to develop a program to help homeowners who may not financially be able to clear brush themselves. Of course, every property owner, as your fire chief knows, you know, has the requirement to clear their property. They can get cited, you know, by, by the city or by a fire district if they're not, you know, clearing defensible space. But we also know that there are homeowners who have financial concerns and trying to meet that. So, that's why, you know, we want to develop, the program hasn't been developed, but the idea is that some of this 2 million dollars in that fund can get used for a, a program that could benefit property owners who have financial issues to be, and not be able to clear on their own. So, we'll, that'll be worked on, it'll get run, that program will probably get set up through the County Consolidated Fire District, and it will work with local jurisdictions, including local fire departments, about how that program is administered, and I, and really to identify the greatest need areas.
And I just wanted to add and reiterate what Supervisor Joya had said, that if, we can't really control, you know, what gets, what gets put out in the press or on the internet or what, or whatnot, but, but please be assured that the county fire chiefs collectively and collaboratively came up with our proposed came up with our proposal, and it's a composite proposal. And that, that we are in dialogue and, and, you know, Supervisor Joya is in the loop and knowing that it's presented as such to benefit the entire county. And so sure, if a, perhaps a publication that has, you know, ties to a certain area may emphasize what may be the benefits to that certain area, please be sure that we're all working on this together, just to make sure that it benefits the entire county.
Thank you both in responding to those, those public comments. Ms. Stone, are there any other public comments on this item?
No, Mayor, there are no public comments.
Okay, I will close the public comment period and now turn to your council members. And I see Councilmember Tom's hand raised.
Thank you Supervisor Joya for joining us. I had the opportunity to tune into a number of the Measure X committee meetings. And there were a few times that there were a lot of advocates for East County Fire that were just pushing their portion, the ask from the, you know, from the county fire chiefs. So I just wanted to let people know that there is a really comprehensive request from the fire chiefs that was presented to the committee. And the total ask is $28.85 million. And I'm hoping that the board approves that full ask. There were a number of times that I provided public comment and asked them to not try to segregate by geography, you know, for East County. And, and still, the points that were presented to the board, you know, there was just, there was most consensus for just East County where they pulled that out. But just below that was for the full allocation from the fire districts. So I'm just, it's really important that the entire ask of the fire chiefs, you know, be allocated. You know, I think that that's fair. That's what Penole residents voted. They were in support of Measure X for this very item. So thank you for the advocacy that you're doing on our behalf. And before we end this item, I would like to move that, that the council forward a letter to the Board of Supervisors, the same letter that we forwarded to the committee.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those comments and the motion. Joya, here's a second.
I'll send it.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk? And we have a roll call vote on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Toms?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Taeve?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salimi?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Joya, you've just gotten the full request, the request from the full council and submitting a letter to your board advocating for funding so that the fire station here can, can be opened with the allocation to yet to be decided on. And I imagine further discussion as to how the chiefs will be working together and eventually, eventually coming up with all the funding, since we know that there will be an additional amount required to open. And then the very significant matter of keeping it open. Something, I'll turn to Councilmember Taeve, and I have a thought about, for you to take away as well, Supervisor Joya, when you go back to discussions. So Councilmember Taeve?
Yeah, Supervisor Joya, I just want to say thank you for being with us tonight, adding some clarity to a little bit of confusion in the community. Your leadership has always been on point for Penole, and I just want to thank you for that and thank you for your advocacy.
And I'm looking forward to representing all of Penole after the redistricting because so far, every redistricting map we've seen, I need to pick up some population. And so it looks like what's just the right amount is I will pick up all of Penole. So I'll look forward to that.
Awesome. Give me my support. Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'm going to see if there are any other hands by council members before I make my comments. And I don't see any others. So I just want to echo one of the public comments, and I think you've already made a note of this Supervisor Joya, and that is the flexibility that could be had, given the increased costs in operations and opening and maintenance of a station. So thank you for that. Related to that, if in discussions at some point, the chiefs can consider that to very clearly specify with all parties involved, what would be the threshold to close the station in the event that there aren't ongoing funds from either party, either the county or the city, to continue keeping the station open? Something that we wouldn't want to see, but it has happened. And we don't know the situation, you know, years from now.
Right. You know, and, you know, the good news is that, you know, Measure X is a, you know, is a half-cent sales tax, which is for 20 years, right? And, and I would expect that in 16 or 18 years, there'll be an attempt to put it back on the ballot to renew it. Because, right, if it goes away in 20 years, we lose that revenue source. But maintaining a sales tax and extending it is a lot easier than getting the first one passed. So I'd be optimistic in that way. And you're right, while any board in the future could change this, I, I think that's why we all need to continue to advocate. I do know there's, there's really strong interest in maintaining this, this fire service. And the hope is also the Measure X revenue will increase over time. It's similar to the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. They have a half-cent sales tax. It is increased over time. So, you know, there's obviously during a recession, there's possibility that the, the revenue goes down. But we were surprised, frankly, at the revenue projection. When we put this on the ballot over a year ago, we thought it would be about $80 million a year. So the projections were increased to $100 million. So despite the pandemic, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well. So, you know, being optimistic would be that the revenue goes up over time and that there's sufficient money. There's always the possibility of a downside. But the sales tax, at least for us, has been in Contra Costa, I think relatively stable. So that's the good news. But yes, we always have to be prepared and, but I think fire service is a priority for all of us.
I would agree with that. The discussions that are ongoing amongst the chiefs, I, I thank you, Chief Juanco, for being our ambassador in that circle. And I am wondering, so this is a question to you, about, this is getting into weeds. And I do mean that pun. You know how people say, no pun intended, there is a pun here. And I, and I know it has to do with weeds. But a couple of things cross my mind when you mentioned assistance to property owners. And that is need on a financial basis, I think covers all ages. So I want to also put a little plug in for those, it may not necessarily be a monetary situation, but perhaps a physical, not having the capacity to do the work. So there's a little element of that as well. And then the code enforcement, so this is the getting into the weeds part. The, the knowledge with regard to code enforcement, that that group of people, code enforcement officers, brings to the discussions, that that not be ignored. And I imagine between our fire chief and our code enforcement officer, has all those conversations happened had. And whatever that results can, if that can also inform your conversations with the rest of the chiefs. That goes along with recognizing where that greatest need is because there are patterns across cities as to where those weeds end up growing, for example, or whatever vegetation under, or, or property areas that may pose a greater risk of fire hazards. So thank you for listening to that. Those were my comments. And on behalf of the city council, unless there are any other questions from council members and/or staff, since we have you here with us Supervisor Joya, we want to thank you for joining us and continuing to represent us as well as you do here on the board.
Thank you, and I appreciate, you know, again, all of you. I know you've worked hard on this issue, provided a lot of leadership. And as I say, the partnership is important. And your chief, I know, has represented the city well and advocating for your needs. And frankly, being, thinking out of the box. I mean, this kind of operational things they're talking about do, is innovative and thinks out of the box. And not everybody does that. So I appreciate that. I know, talking to Chief Burchard, our chief, you know, your chief has been very flexible. And, and I think, because he, right, he's trying to just figure out the best way to get fire service and protection for the city. And he's approaching it in a way that, that, you know, not everybody would. So I just want to express appreciation for that.
I think it's that kind of thinking in a situation that we haven't been in.
Yeah.
And the additional urgency with effects of climate change. So yes, thank you.
Well, yeah, that's why, that's why Councilmember, Councilmember Murphy, that's why Councilmember Murphy's over at, at the climate conference, right? He, he wants to, he wants to make sure we address climate change so we don't have as many wildfires, right? Yep. That's true. It seems like our young population, I thought I heard a public comment telling us to recycle too. So I think that, that young five-year-old is probably telling us the same.
Yes, we have to, we have to recognize, we did hear that loudly. We acknowledge that. There was also mention of water.
Giving us our orders and directives. I got it, we heard.
We heard that. And thanks to the parents for, for having that kind of influence on the younger folks to recognize the importance of our natural elements and the threats to our natural elements. So all around, all of that is helpful. Councilmember Taeve, did you have something else?
Oh, no. I was just going to mention the water comment. I mean, I think she was right on point with everything.
Okay. All right. Well, it looks like you clarified some things for us as council members as well as for members of the public. We look forward to continuing discussions with you. And again, we will see you on November 11th, if not sooner.
Yeah, that's right. We'll definitely see you at Veterans Day. All right. Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Joya, and thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we're going to move on to, or we're going to move back to item 10A. And 10A is a presentation by Assistant City Manager De La Rosa or Recreation Manager Maria Picasso, or a combination about the city's plans related to the holiday tree lighting. So please take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Maria Picasso, our Recreation Manager, is actually going to take on this item. So I'll defer to her.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and members of the public. I will be providing you with an update on this year's annual tree lighting event. But before I get started, I will be going over some event highlights and information from previous years. Next slide, please. Some event highlights. So the tree lighting has been offered for over 23 years. We have over 300 participants that attend the event in combination from the participants at the tree lighting and at the Senior Center for the Activities. Activities include arts and crafts, photos with Santa, cookie decorating, holiday refreshments, and performances from local groups and organizations. Next slide. And the next few slides, you will see photos from previous events. That includes the activities that take place at the Senior Center. Here, you can see some of the children participating in the activities, the holiday refreshments, public works decorating the tree. Next slide, please. And here we have some of the performances that we have at the Senior Center prior to the tree lighting. We have the Senior Center Choir Group, the Boy Scout Band, the Girl Scout Choir, and an emcee, or emcee of the event usually has been a council member. Or the mayor, here was the mayor, that was emcee of the event at the Senior Center. Next slide, please. This slide includes more performances. We have our Tiny Todd Program that performs during the event. We also have the Penole Valley High School Choir that puts on a performance. And Penole Valley High School performs during the event. So they lead us from the Senior Center to the Community Corner right before the tree lighting. And next slide, please. These photos here are from our drive-through event. Last year, our event was modified because of COVID. So we decorated the parking lot, the public safety building, and we had Santa and Mrs. Claus join us to greet the participants. We gave away cookie kits to all participants at the end of the holiday drive. Next slide, please. These are some details from our 2021 event. The event will be modified. It will be held on Saturday, December 4th. And the event will be outdoors, so we'll have activities from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Fernandez Park. We will have a tree lighting ceremony at the Community Corner at 5:30. The event, the activities that will be included at the park will be, will have face painters, balloon twisters. There'll be games, we'll have literacy activities, arts and crafts. This will all be offered in collaboration with the Recreation Department, the Police Department, the Penole Library. We'll also have the Penole Valley High School Interact Group volunteering. We'll also have some vendors that will be providing the face painting and balloon twisting during the event. Santa and Mrs. Claus will also be available for pictures and will be walking around during the event. Holiday refreshments will be available during the event. Our cook from the Senior Center will be baking the cookies this year. And the event will culminate with the lighting of the tree at sunset at the Community Corner. Next slide, please. This slide here includes photos from previous events prior to COVID. There's also one that was from last year. Last year, Sequoia Real Estate, who is our holiday tree sponsor, they, along with Santa and Mrs. Claus, helped lead the countdown for last year's event. But you can also see here, council leads, prior to COVID, it was helping us lead the countdown, pictures of the crowd, children looking at the lights in the crowd during the event. Next slide, please. This event, we have many sponsors that have supported our event throughout the years. I also want to note that not all sponsors, you know, are listed here because they could have been participating in previous years. But we do want to thank Sequoia Real Estate. They are our sponsor of the holiday tree. They've been doing it for the last few years and they've committed to doing this. Mechanics Bank has also helped us with our children's activities and they donate on an annual basis. We have the Bayfront Chamber of Commerce that has hosted cookie decorating kits, not cookie decorating kits, cookie decorating stations for the children at the Senior Center. The Penole History Museum donated all of our goodies the year before and the cookies. So those were all treats provided by them in 2019. Trader Joe's, Sprouts, Starbucks, East Bay Coffee, Bear Claw, and Safeway have also provided treats or supported the event throughout the years. Thank you. And this concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Picasso. Let's find out whether there are any public comments following your presentation. So Ms. Stone, can you let us know?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a public comment. Christie Lamb Julian.
Good evening, everyone. So I come from San Jose where there is a huge Christmas in the park that happens every year. I wish just wanted to make it just more of a community event where each school could provide a tree, where the students can decorate ornaments, just to kind of decorate a tree. And these sponsors could actually decorate their own tree to make it kind of a come-together, everyone has a tree to decorate and support kind of the community event to build up the community a little bit more. I just have had feedback from other parents and community members of just a feeling of lacking of community involvement. of community involvement for first-time community members and that sort of thing to try to build it up a little bit, bit more to be representative. Just your thoughts on that? Of just kind of having a sponsored tree or community tree for each school or class or what have you to make it a little bit more rounded besides the sponsors that are already there.
Thank you. Can I comment, Madam Mayor?
Let's find out if Ms. Chris, if Ms. Lam has additional comments. There we go. Okay, timer is off. Please go ahead and respond, Ms. Picasso.
Yes, so we have had a suggestion like this from somebody else in the community. And we were looking to see if this was something that we could provide. Unfortunately, because of the power source that we have in the Community Corner, there wouldn't be enough power to light the tree in the Community Corner plus additional trees. So this is something that we would have to look into further. But as of right now, we have been told by the Public Works Department that in the Community Corner, there's just not enough power source to light up multiple trees.
Ms. Picasso, if I can ask, I know that you have, in the past, we've had ornament decorating stations as part of the event. Do members of the community get to take the ornaments they've created and place them on the tree at the Community Corner if they want, as opposed to take them home to decorate whatever holiday item, tree they want to decorate?
You know, they usually take it home. The children, usually when they come to the decorating station, they're excited, you know, with what they have created, and they want to take it home. It's been very rare that we've had anybody leave anything behind. I know also, I'm not sure how durable the ornaments that we provide would sustain, you know, any weather conditions. Wasn't that we would have to look into in regards to, you know, having the ornaments left over from them and brought over? I think that would be something that would be a nice addition, but we'll definitely have to look into that.
Thanks.
Ms. Stone, do we have other comments, public comments?
Kristi Lam Julian does have her hand raised again.
Okay, let's hear Ms. Lam Julian. And Ms. Lam Julian, I wanted, thank you for, you did tell us this was the first time you participated in a council meeting. This is really, this is really delightful to have someone as participatory as you have been throughout. So welcome again. Let us know what you have in your mind related to this item.
Thank you so much. Just a lot of feedback from other kind of PT moms and just working parents that just don't have the time to be able to attend this meeting. In regards to having power and what have you, I think it would be a great event if we could just, as simple as a printout of an ornament that the students could decorate, and then we could just laminate it, cut it out and put it on a tree, so then they have a sense of pride to build the pride in the community of just being one together for this holiday season, no matter what holiday you celebrate, to kind of bring it all together that we could do, that we wouldn't really need to provide lighting for, but just the pride that for the Tiny Todd, that they colored and decorated or put glitter on something that is put out there for everyone to enjoy, to bring the community together through. We've been, we've been having such a really, really hard time with COVID and all those things. I think it would just bring everyone together that it doesn't have to be lit. They could just color it, and then, you know, we can put it up there. I've done that with several other classes within, with My God Kids to do. But I think it's something that we can do. Just they could color it, they could laminate, they could put glitter on it, they could put what have you, but just a sense of pride of doing something that contributes to the community to bring that togetherness.
Ms. I love that.
Um, sorry.
Hold on, I gotta first.
Okay, thank you. I think would be nice to have a Christmas in the park of a true Pinot community celebration of just not just one tree lighting, but just each school, each class could have a tree. And I'm sure we could find an artificial tree to decorate, to submit to this, to where it would be just a little forest of Pinot and its youth that has such pride and joy for the season that we could really pull it off without having to put a strain on the power grid and make it as green as possible. And just bring some joy to the kids that they did something that everyone can enjoy and admire, is my thought on that. And I could find probably a template that we could just put out to all of the schools if they wanted to do that and participate. But I think it would be a great community building project.
Okay, and we'll make note of that. Ms. Stone, are there any other comments from any others?
No, Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment period and now turn to councilmembers for your questions or comments to Ms. Picasso. Councilmember Toms.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Picasso. I'm looking forward to having a gathering outside this year. I think those are some nice ideas from the member of the public, and I think you probably have contacts with most of the PTAs. You know, where if some classes wanted to, you know, do a class ornament or something like that and participate, or if they wanted to gather with their friends at the tree lighting, you know, that would be a nice idea. I know we've done that when my kids were younger. We had a, you know, a contingent from Ellerhorst Elementary School that attended the event together and really had a lot of fun. I feel like knocking on wood, I'm just going to ask you, are there any plans in case of rain?
I, I'm hoping not for the rain, but if the rain did happen, our activities at the park would have to be canceled because of the rain. I know we did have rain, I think, in 2018. So at that, we were in the Senior Center, and at that point, our activities in the Senior Center continued, but our tree lighting for that night was canceled. So it's something that we would have to probably reschedule. I know it was difficult in 2018 to reschedule the actual tree lighting. So it's something that we would have to consider a little bit more to see what would be, I know automatically, just because we're at the park, the activities would have to be canceled.
Okay, great. And just for the member of the public, for Ms. Lam Julian, can you maybe give her your email address so that maybe, you know, you guys can do some coordinating or following, follow-up with some of the ideas?
Yes, definitely. Ms. Lam, if you can email me at m.p.I.C.A.Z.O. at ci.pinol.ca.us. We can discuss this a little bit further and see what we can do this year.
Thanks.
And through the chair, Mayor, I'd just like to elaborate, you know, Ms. Picasso mentioned that if it rains, then we may have to cancel the activities. I just want the public to know that one of the reasons why she stated that is we're still within a masking requirement and social distancing. And if those change, we may be able to move the event indoors. But at this point, being in a confined space doesn't comply with the orders. So I just want the public to know that.
Thank you for mentioning that. As much as people want to be outdoors and celebrating, we saw some of that already during some of the public events in October. First and foremost is, is health, and our interest, at least I, as your mayor, very much interested in would support ongoing necessary measures to minimize exposure to COVID, as that is still, still, still in our midst. So thank you for that comment, Assistant City Manager De La Rosa. Mr., Councilmember Murphy. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Tate and then come back to Councilmember Murphy. Councilmember Tate?
Oh, I didn't hear Murphy. I'm so sorry. I think you got cut off. I just heard counselor. Councilmember Tate, do you mind if I go, or do you want to go first?
I don't know.
Go ahead, Councilmember Murphy. Sorry about that.
Okay, just two questions. No worries at all. Thank you, Mayor. Just two questions. Picasso, thank you so much. I want to thank you for your presentation. Also want to thank you for your continued success with the Food Bank Distribution, drive-through every second Monday of the month, as well as your recent success with the movie in Fernandez Park. It's really great to see those things moving, and I just wanted to commend you on your work. I had two questions. One, I think is kind of relevant to the public comment, and we've had public comments about this in the past. I've also had folks reach out to me about volunteering for some of our community events. Is there a current volunteer process for folks who are interested in getting more involved? How would one volunteer for something like this if they were interested?
You know, at this time, we are not, because of the situation that we're in, and normally we do, there's a volunteer process that would have to go through Human Resources, and they would have to apply and go through the whole volunteer process in order to be involved with our community events and help. At this time, we have our volunteer group from the high school that is going to be helping us and the recreation team. So it's something that, as, you know, we continue to build these events, and we do want to, and so, you know, be able to return to that when we have more community involvement. But at this time, I know that we did, we're not taking any new volunteers to help with that event.
And Councilmember Murphy, sort of to expand on that, as we start building the Community Services Department, that's something that we could look at is expanding our use of volunteers, not only for our events, but for any other services that we provide. So that will be one of our long-term goals.
Great. I think it would be valuable for us to have a database so that we can go back to some folks who, it seems like this has been brought up several times. So I understand the health and safety considerations. I also feel like there's valuable contributions of folks, but also that don't have to sometimes be in person to volunteer. So maybe we can, that'd be great to circle back about and more so for the public just to know how to get involved in these processes in events.
I would like to add, if I could, Councilmember Murphy, the consultant city hired Sorrel to help us develop a communication engagement plan are looking specifically at the issue of having a more robust volunteer program, including a database. So that is an issue that they'll discuss, and I expect the communication engagement plan to have a recommendation related to how to build out the opportunities for volunteerism in many different forms. And as you note, we're a little limited in this, Ms. Picasso or Mr. De La Rosa mentioned, we're a little limited because of COVID in-person restrictions right now. But there are a lot of capacities in which volunteers could help. So I expect that that forthcoming plan will provide some recommendations related to that.
Okay, Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, I just was thinking about when we talked about our tree lighting, you know, along San Pablo. And I was just wondering if there might be solar options. If, I know you mentioned that there was an electrical issue for multiple trees. Maybe solar would work. I know the ones we bought for our house, they go until about 2:00 o'clock in the morning. So it might be an option.
Thank you. I'll take note of that. I know the current lights that we have are not solar. They are powered. So it's something that we could look into for the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Murphy, you have your virtual hand up. Did you have something else?
Yeah, thank you for your patience. Wish there's a spot like that right here. I just wanted to confirm that this was something we were collaborating with Pinot Television on to make sure it was either livestreamed and/or, you know, something, you know, videography focused was collaborating with, around this event.
Yes, Councilmember Murphy, we are working with PCTV for this event.
Okay, can you elaborate what that would look like?
Then we'll have the staff on site to film the event. So there'll probably be two individuals who will be filming it. Ultimately, we'll have some edit on the video done so that we can rebroadcast it on PCTV.
Just to clarify, does that mean Assistant City Manager De La Rosa, that they'll be broadcasting it live? And in addition, they'll be doing an edited version for rebroadcast afterwards?
I don't know if they'll be live. I'll have to talk to, based now, normally, we've had it live when we've had it at the Senior Center because we have connections there. There may be some connections in Fernandez Park that we'll be able to film that live and then possibly connect to the truck. So I'll follow up with whether it's going to be live or just edited and rebroadcast.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salimi, I think you have your virtual hand up. Did I?
That is correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Ms. Picasso, thank you for the event. My question, I'm just trying to understand, is that always the first Saturday of the month of December? Because sometimes it's the second Saturday, sometimes it's the first Saturday. And I'm trying to organize my calendar. It's my daughter's birthday, I have some time, and I'm trying to make both my personal life and my five-year-old daughter happy. So just, just for clarity, is that always the first Saturday or the second Saturday of December?
Yes, it's always, it's always the first Saturday of December.
Okay, thank you. And the other question that I had was related to the electricity. If we have an issue with electrical issues, why don't we just install a 440 somewhere in the city close to that park that can help more than one tree to be late? I don't, I don't think it's that cost prohibitive to make it happen.
There's always, Councilmember, Mayor Protem, there's always a possibility of renting a larger generator that we could use. The tree lighting is actually at the Community Corner. So that's why we're limited there. So we would have to bring in a generator so it has enough power to light up other trees. I assume that Ms. Lam was talking about trees around the, the large tree. But if she's talking about Fernandez Park, we may be able to look at some areas that have electricity there.
Excellent. Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. I see Mr. Binghamman's virtual hand up. Mr. Binghamman, did you want to add to the comments to help us understand how your staff works to make this event happen along with wrecks in park? I know we have the benefit of Mr. Binghamman being an arborist, one of those hidden talents and resources that we have. Okay, I.
I think he's muted.
Mr. Binghamman, you might be muted. Try unmuting. There you go. No? There might be an internet connection.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I was having technical trouble right there.
I understand that. Okay, it's all yours. We're all ears.
Yes, in regards to the power availability, both of the Community Corner and Fernandez Park, we have several outlets that could be plugged into that are direct line powered. Unfortunately, the Community Corner, we only have one outlet, and that's currently piggybacked off of other electrical utilities at the Community Corner. So lighting more than the main tree at Community Corner presents an issue. However, if something wanted to be developed with the outlets in Fernandez Park, that, there's more availability there.
Okay, well, I would say that you and Assistant City Manager De La Rosa and Ms. Picasso have more to talk about, given some of the ideas that were presented today, and then you can let us know whether those are actually feasible or not. I think we can get caught up in the excitement of the activities, and we do have to also, along with that, recognize that there are some realities that sometimes keep us from having an event as grand as we might like.
Mayor, we do have a couple of public comments that have popped up in the last few minutes.
Yes, I have closed this public comment period at this point. So if those persons who have public comment can send an email to Ms. Picasso, particularly if it is related to the tree lighting. particularly if it is related to the tree lighting ceremony, or any other ideas related to festivities around the holidays, we would appreciate that. Ms. Picasso, can you please repeat your email address?
It is m.picazo@ci.penole.ca.us.
Thank you. So I have a question for you all, because I haven't heard this mentioned. I recall in some years past that there was also, I don't know what to call this, but there are these way, oh, boy, pardon me, I can't remember, something that's suspended over San Pablo Avenue.
The swags?
Are they called swags? Okay, thank you. Yes. So that they announced that something was coming. I think that adds to the anticipation of this. Will we have that this year for this particular event?
We did not plan for that. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that goes from one end of the road to the other end of the road. And we do not per se have a banner that that's, that we buy once a year and we just hold and use every year. So that would be something that we would have to purchase in the future and possibly schedule placing it along the lines.
So I'll offer that we'll look into whether the swag that we've used in the past, because I know that we did hang it in years past, see if that's still available or if that's been a past practice and it's not cost prohibitive. I think we'd like to continue to hang that because I do think it adds to the festive atmosphere of downtown. So yeah, if we have one available, can procure one for a reasonable price, then we'll install one this year.
Thank you. Either that or alternatively, whatever green recyclable best types of banners there might be that are sometimes placed along some of the posts, the light posts, for different seasons during the year. I know we have had some. Don't recall whether there are some available for the winter season, but that's another option. Okay. Anyone else have any other thoughts? I want to, I don't see any other virtual hands up. I want to extend double, triple, and as many times as we can possibly to all of the organizations that have in the past been event sponsors for something like this. It reflects, their involvement reflects what I believe is necessary to pull off something like this that is community-oriented. Certainly, the staff is available to help sort out the kinds of necessary things that have to be kept in mind for purposes of safety, et cetera. And it's some of the ideas over the years, I think, that have been developed have come from the event sponsors. And hearing tonight that there are new members of our community here in Penole, then I think that we can continue introducing or integrating somehow some of the ideas to reflect the event, the event's significance with regard to building and sustaining the sense of community and that sense of holiday spirit, as well as reflecting the diversity as to how the winter holidays are celebrated. We think, I think we did a little bit of that, attempted at calling this a tree lighting ceremony as opposed to a specific naming of a holiday. Then, you know, there are all these different ways to celebrate the winter months. And so increasingly, I hope that we will integrate some of those ideas. My plug is to have some Mexican hot chocolate available. And hey, if I can pull it off, I will prepare you all a batch, and we can enjoy that somehow. But short of that, there are probably as well other culturally-based kinds of experiences that could be made part of an event like this, again, to reflect the diversity, increasing diversity in our town. So thank you for your spirit and good work, and all the departments that are involved in helping us have a safe holiday season. Anyone else? Okay, we were here to hear this report. Thank you both. See, Assistant City Manager De La Rosa, Ms. Picasso, Mr. Binghamman, and members of the public for your new ideas. Okay, we move on to the next item on our agenda. We don't have any new business. We keep scrolling, and now it's time for reports and communications. My reports, since we last met, there were two meetings where I represented you as a city in that one, one of those meetings was the Mayor's and Supervisor's meeting held on the morning of the 28th. The other was the East Bay Division, East Bay Division of Cal Cities meeting held that same evening. For the morning meeting, the presentation was an update by the county, by the county's Sustainability Coordinator, Ms. Jolie Linden, who gave us an overview of the county's climate action change plan and activities, particularly to what the county is having cities consider be part of our activities to be had related to climate change. And so, as you all recall, I believe it was either, if not meeting ago, two meetings ago, fairly recently, that the council voted to have two items related to climate change that will help us assess what more we can do. But for starters, we will have an inventory and then of what is already being done in the city and then related to that, an action plan to align with some of the activities that this county has been undertaking for several years now. The other meeting during the East Bay Division meeting at Cal City was a presentation, including Contra Costa Transportation Authority's Executive Director, Timothy Hale, who presented an update on a number of different projects related to increasing mobility and trying to do something about the IED corridor and all the traffic associated with that and how it affects cities. There's a lot to be learned about what is going on. Some number of participants got excited at hearing some of the results of their Gomentum campus in Concord, where there have been some testing of autonomous vehicles. I half facetiously, but also seriously, wanted to volunteer the city of Penole as a test ground, but I think, I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. Those vehicles are in testing mode, and I think for, just generally, we will want to stay abreast through our representation on CCTA's board to bring us back any further news as to how Penole can benefit from all the good work that that agency is doing. So thank you again, reminding all to remain aware of your your individual family, pod, if you call it, ability to minimize exposure to COVID and do as much as you can to maintain public health practices related to that, social distancing, masking, and whenever possible, also vaccination. Next, we do not have any council appointments this evening, so I will turn to city council members for your committee reports and communications, beginning with Mayor Protem Salimi.
I'd like to report to Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Taeve?
Yeah, just, I'm behind you on one. There we go. So I was reappointed to Government Transparency Labor Relations, their committee for Cal Cities. So I was representing everybody on that level. I just wanted to say, you know, we've heard a presentation earlier today to the citizens out there. You know, I just want to encourage you to make your voice heard regarding Measure X. You made your voice heard with the vote. We just need to advocate on the county level for the supervisors to approve this $2 million that might be coming to Penole for us, or helping to open the station. So I just want to make sure that everybody is advocating. Let your voice be heard at the county level on November 16th. More information to come. I'll be posting things on social media so that everyone can hear about it. I want to remind everybody about the Art Funds Meeting that's coming up this weekend. So we'll be posting more information about that on social media as well. It's on the city website. You know, this is a big deal, and I want to make sure that everybody is out there advocating for the needs and wants for the city. So that's all I have to report. The roads are slick for some reason over the past month, and it just seemed like after that big rain, it just seemed like there was a lot of accidents out there. Just be careful out there. I know that's kind of broadly speaking to everybody, but be careful. The roads are slick, and for some reason, on the 80, it just seems to be there there's an accident or two almost every day. So just be careful as you're driving, especially in this, it's pretty bad weather. So just, that was my report. I want to say thanks to everybody, and it looks like we might be getting out at 9:00. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Is it 9:00 or is it 3:41 a.m.? I am, and I'm in Glasgow, everybody, at the COP26 meeting, which is the UN's Climate Change Conference, and I am just so moved once again and really proud to be a part of this council. And I just wanted to recognize, one of the main conversations of this conference is around climate finance and financing projects that are benefit to our community. And it's so, it's really great to say at this conference that my city in Penole is really putting, really putting our foot down around climate action when it comes to funding projects around recycled water and solar and these other issues we've been talking about this year. So I just wanted to take a moment to just honor our work this year and again, say that small cities are on the front line of climate action. And also want to, and I'm happy to send this around, to say that I was able to speak to KQED about this. Thank you, city staff, for putting together that report around our capital improvement plan that helped to showcase the level of work we're doing and how we're putting ourselves forward. So just really wanted to say that. And then, yeah, not too much of an update. I just, again, want to say thank you so much for keeping this meeting as short as we can. Like I said, it's 3:42 a.m. here, but I was definitely wanting to make it because I think what we talked about tonight is really important. I want to continue to encourage the public to just keep making public comment at all of the different meetings you can, including our city council meeting, but obviously also including our Board of Supervisors meetings. There are a lot of things going on. And last but not least, of course, this Friday, we'll be having an MCE board, excuse me, yes, this Friday at 12:15, we'll be having an MCE Executive Committee meeting, and that is also open to the public. If you care about your electricity bills, if you care about clean energy, these are the meetings you also want to make public comment at. So thanks again, and thanks for everybody's work, and have a great evening or morning.
I think we lost our mayor.
That's all for me. Oh, okay.
Thank you. So I will move to the next.
Actually, I didn't get my report. I don't have any updates. Just I want to reiterate communication to the County Board of Supervisors for, and the ask is for the board to approve the full request of the county fire chiefs. We don't need to segregate, you know, just give us $2 million for Penole because the fire chiefs gave a comprehensive request. And I think if we just focus on having the board fulfill and allocate funds for the full request, that's going to get us what we need. So I have no other report. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes item number D, council request for future agenda items. Next item, item E, CD, item D, council request for future agenda items. I will start with Madam Mayor. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I would like a better internet connection, but I don't think the council can help me with that one. Or maybe, yes, when we eventually start talking about broadband, right? Thank you. I lost my connection there for a moment, and I do not have future agenda items requests at this point. So back to you, Mayor Protem Salimi. Do you have any?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much. Following the conversation that we had this afternoon with Supervisor Troy and the Chief of the Fire Department, it's very likely that if we were to get some money for Measure X, we'll be able to get $2 million, but it will still have a gap of $1 to $2 million that the city of Penole would have to fulfill in order to be able to open Station 74. So I would like to have a conversation again on the conversation that we had last year on charter city and real estate transfer tax as a means of being able to fulfill that gap of $1 to $2 million that we need to open Station 74. Or the other option that we may have is to open a parcel tax.
If I might, if I might add.
Yes.
Protem, so while, while it's true, nothing has been penciled out, and we still have to do all the, you know, all the specifics and details. What is being proposed is that the current fire budget plus the $2 million would be roughly in the ballpark to open both fire stations. So I don't know the additional $1 million to $1.5 million. I'm not sure where that figure is coming from, but the gist of the proposal is that the Measure X, $2 million plus our current required budget would be enough to vote.
Okay, so if this is the case, I'm glad to hear that, Chief. So I would withdraw my request at this moment. Thank you, Chief, for the clarification.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Chief. That's news. You, yes. Now I'm curious about that, but we can talk another time. So thank you. Was that it, Councilmember Protem Salimi?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to, before I go on, I want to thank all of you for that quick pickup teamwork. While I disappeared. All right, Councilmember Taeve?
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, for our conversation today with the permit process, I was wondering if there's any interest for us to have an agenda item to come back, you know, going into detail, you know, differentiating permits between small, medium, and large, and what the customer experience would be and what our residents' experiences would be for that. Just to get kind of a comprehensive understanding of how much workload is out there. I mean, there was a number thrown out of 600. I think that was maybe a total number of permits or something that might have been out there. But I just to add clarity to the process, so that if at all, we can, a resident knows what to expect for a small, medium, and large project. And maybe council can have a discussion, and residents can come in and ask questions and share their experience.
Is there an interest in having discussion about the permitting process to enlighten us and members of the public about what that is? And also, not only to hear questions from the public, since it would be an open meeting, but also to hear suggestions, their suggestions as to what they believe might help all around? Is there consensus on having an agenda item?
Yes, specifically, one, some people have requested to have a geotechnical engineer to come and do some work for her to be able to get some permit. Yeah, just for us to get some information, I think that'll be good.
See, I'm thinking that, well, Assistant City, no, City Manager, pardon me, City Manager Murray, is it, could staff put together a report back rather than having a meeting on the agenda item so that we are, and that report, it also could be put on the website and published on all the media that we have for clarity to the public about existing processes?
Sure, and I think that Director Whalen will have some thoughts on where she might see some opportunities for some process tweaks. So we're happy to do, happy to package that into a memo for the city council and for the public, or provide whatever information, whatever format the council would like.
Was there consensus?
No, not yet, because I jumped into with an alternative for us to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be looking to see if we have consensus. If we don't, then.
I'd be interested in having that, but I wouldn't want to take building, I wouldn't want to take personnel away from processing permits just to update us. So if it could be, you know, forward a couple of months after they've had an opportunity to really catch up.
So if it could be, you know, forward a couple of months after they, they've had an opportunity to really catch up.
Yeah, I think after Jan, after January or April would be reasonable. I mean, if we wanted to do a date certain, just because we're going to get through this work each and then really just how we roll this program out. That's really what, you, you know, what, what I'm hoping to do in, in kickstart our, our, uh, new process.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, so, I mean, I would imagine that being on the next council meeting.
Yeah.
But, but, uh, City Manager, you would pencil it in, whatever would seem reasonable, right?
Yeah, if you guys would like to propose a date certain, that would be great. That would give us something to, um, to know what the expectations are. So, um, I've heard a couple of different ideas, um, you know, early in the new year versus after we've, you know, I, I think it's a little unrelated to the issue of the temporary suspension of the collection. So if we want to, um, I think in the, say in the February timeframe, we'd provide enough time for Director Wayland to get her feet under her and, um, get to know the process and maybe even identify some opportunities to make some tweaks. Um, if that would work for the council, uh,
I think that's good.
Our first meeting in June? Can we say our first meeting in June?
January or June?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was wondering if we get through April 30th, right? That was our cutoff for this? Or do you think that you could, uh, the study would be done and everything will be completed in, in January?
So again, I don't, I, I'm thinking of this and what I've heard is it's, to my hearing, it's completely unrelated to this issue of the fee study. It's about what our basic permitting process is. The fee study isn't going to change anything about the process. It's, the process would remain the same. And the fees that are collected for different types of projects at different points, um, you know, would remain the same. So if what we're, want to do is provide a better understanding to everybody about what the requirements are for different types of projects, what the main steps in the process are, we can certainly present that in, um, in, in February. Um, and I think if you want to get a follow-up report after the new fee, uh, structure, if any, um, has been implemented, we can do that as a separate item as well.
Okay, that, that, that's, let's go with that. Uh, so second meeting in February as a date to let us know, um, it'll give Director, well, Director Wayland and anyone else who needs to be involved, um, an orientation as well as, uh, an integration of what, uh, what actually happens, uh, the other side of the intake desks.
I think, um, that timing would also be, um, appropriate and useful because I would, I'm hoping that by that time we'll be returning to more business as we knew it in terms of, uh, more openness for in-person processing. So I think we've, um, implemented a lot of tools for online processing. It would be great. I know that some people prefer to do, uh, conduct their business more in person. And I think we'll, um, be returning to more in-person opportunities at that time. So I think it'll be useful to communicate what's in store for that at that time.
Okay, so I think there's consensus on, on that kind of report back to us for that date in February. Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Tate, anything else?
Someone kind of recap what that was? I mean, we're going to go, the, the date and?
For the second meeting in February, staff will report back on the current procedures and process that an applicant, um, has to go through related to permit.
Okay, and it won't include what the new fees are?
The, the new fees is on a separate track. That's, work is not going to be completed until the end of March. Um, there'll be a report back on the findings of the fee study because if the fee study indicates that our fees should be different from what they currently are, we'll need the council to take action to update the fees through a modification of the master fee schedule. So there'll be a, a completely separate opportunity. We'll also be talking about other fees at that time that might need to be modified. So that'll be a, you know, a separate agenda item.
Good on, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Murphy?
Uh, um, no agenda items. I do have an inquiry that probably will be an agenda item, but I just wanted to know, when are we?
Okay, I think being on, on another continent makes a difference, so, um.
Let's try again. Councilmember Murphy, you cut out right before you were to ask the question.
Okay, we might get him back. And so, um, if you can hear me, Councilmember Murphy, hold on. We cannot hear you, so I will come back to you after hearing from Councilmember Toms. Councilmember Toms, any agenda item requests?
No, I have none.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy, okay, are you back? We, we can't hear you. I don't know if you can hear me.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I said, no, uh, none from me. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Okay, we caught, we caught up with each other. All right, transcontinentally. Um, all right, um, I see a virtual hand, um, for, um, from Mayor Protem Salimi. Did you have another thought?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was wondering if we can, uh, have a meeting in person for the December 7th meeting. That will be the reorganization of the council, and I believe you have been mayor for a year and you have been had the opportunity to have a meeting in person.
Are you asking for, for myself? Because I would prefer not to meet in person. Um, I think you all know my stance is that first and foremost is safety and I don't have, feel a need to have kind of meeting. Um, so that's my response to that. If you are asking for yourself, that's a different matter.
Yes, I would like to, uh, the December 7th to be in person, please, if it's time with the rest of the council.
I would ask if, um, staff would be ready to provide whatever measures are necessary to minimize, um, exposure to COVID. So we need some social distancing, some possibly barriers in place, et cetera.
Um, I will mention that, um, I know that we are, um, expecting that the council might want to have a, um, small, um, COVID-safe, uh, in-person celebration of sorts for the transition. Um, so we have had that in mind. Um, we hadn't been, uh, expecting to have a council, an actual council meeting in person on the 7th, but, um, I will ask the city clerk, Ms. Bell, to, um, respond to the matter of whether we'll be, uh, up and ready. My, I believe the answer is yes, if we, um, want to, but, um, I'll ask Kermit to confirm that.
Thank you, City Manager Murray. Um, yes, to answer your question, we will have the capability to have an in-person meeting on December 7th if the council directs us to do that. Um, we also have the ability of doing a, a virtual meeting and doing the reorganization virtually as we did, um, the last year and then doing a separate event, um, that would be ceremonious for the, you know, to honor the incoming mayor and just to, to have the celebration as a, as a separate event. So we could do either option.
Okay, so you heard several options, um, Mayor Protem Salimi. You're still, um, we want to repeat.
Uh, yes, thank you. So, yes, I would like to have, uh, the council meeting in person on December 7th, please.
Joy, have consensus on that?
I, if I may add a little bit of additional information for your consideration and, uh, City Attorney Casher and City Clerk Bell, correct me if I'm incorrect. I believe that if we do have an in-person meeting, um, three members of the city council will need to participate in person. Um, and two will be able to participate remotely. Is that correct, uh, City Attorney Casher and, um, City Clerk Bell?
Yeah, so the, the Brownac requires that a quorum of the city council be physically present, um, at wherever the meeting is noticed. So if we do have an in-person meeting at City Hall, then three council members would need to be physically present, um, at City Hall for the meeting.
And, uh, will there be a capability for what we, we would then consider a hybrid meeting?
Yes, there'd be capability for a hybrid meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I also just want to clarify, so in this part of the agenda, we're doing requests for future agenda items. So maybe we could, um, I, I know that we're going to bring back the local emergency, um, confirmation I, at the next meeting, so I don't know if we are going to include this as part of that or as a separate future agenda item. But that's this item on the agenda for this evening.
Thank you. So I think we're, um, just asking for agenda items now. And so the, um, agenda item request is to have a December 7th in-person council meeting. And we've heard that there is that capability. So, um, is there consensus to have a discussion about a December 7th meeting on the agenda? Which would have to be for the agenda of, uh, November 16th?
To the mayor, if I may, um, I think that, that City Clerk Bell was, was kind of alluding to this point. We will have, um, the, uh, kind of AB 361, um, item that will come forward where, you know, we bring before, forward the staff report seeking direction from the council regarding whether or not to, to stay virtual. So that would be an opportunity to discuss whether or not we want to continue with virtual meetings. Um, so that will be on the agenda for November 16th. We could take that as an opportunity to discuss the December 7th meeting or other issues related to virtual meetings, but that will be on the agenda for November 16th.
Thank you for confirming that. Okay, so I think, um, Com- Mayor Protem's, uh, Salimi's request dovetails into that discussion, or can?
That's correct. So I will wait until, uh, the ABR 461 discussion, uh, and the extension of the emergency ordinance at the next council meeting. And that just would like staff to be prepared for this conversation, just, uh, to be ready for the 7th. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, so we've gone through a round of Mayor, I'm sorry, of Councilmember, uh, request for agenda items. Uh, Councilmember Toms, you got your virtual hand up. What's that?
Yeah, just to, to kind of piggyback on, um, Mayor Protem's request. Uh, can we have the city attorney, um, uh, tell us whether or not, um, we can ask those that want to participate live that they be vaccinated? Is that, are we, we able to, to limit that since we're offering both in-person and virtual, a hybrid model? And you don't have to answer that now. I think that should be part of the discussion for next two weeks from now.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms. I'll be, I'm happy to discuss that, um, at the November 16th meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes. Okay, now we move on to, um, City Manager Report.
Yes, thank you. Um, as has been mentioned, we have a couple of, um, council and community events coming up. So, um, we have shared information, including, uh, mailer sent to every address in Pinole about our special council meeting in a workshop format this coming, um, Saturday to discuss how to expend the ARPA funds that the city is receiving. Uh, there'll also be the Veterans Day event next Thursday in Fernandez Park. So encouraging members of the public to participate in any of those that you're interested in. Um, we'll be sending communications to all Pinole addresses on a couple of other items soon. One is the city is conducting what's called a local road safety plan where we're looking at data on a road safety incidence and also getting input and comments from community members about where they feel their concerns in our transit network and transportation network. So look forward to receiving a flyer in your mailbox about that, that will provide you with an easy avenue to contribute your comments. We'll also be having a workshop regarding the, a couple of options for the design of the replacement bridge over San Pablo Avenue. So there'll be a community workshop, um, coming up in early December on that. Similarly, that will, there'll be information on that, uh, in the mailer that all Pinole addresses will receive regarding the local road safety plan. So really encourage members of the public who are interested to provide your input on those topics through one of the many means that are provided. And finally, um, again, wanted to, um, note just how excited I am to have a new member, uh, join our management team at the city, our new community development director, Lily Wayland, who is an area resident and an expert in her field and will provide us with a lot of, um, additional bandwidth and great new ideas. So looking forward to, um, uh, introducing the council members and members of the community to Ms. Wayland, who I'm sure you'll agree is going to be a great asset in addition. That's all for me.
Thank you. That's quite an achievement to find someone who, uh, is, you know, wanting to help us through all kinds of different things and new ideas and eventual development and hopefully see them to fruition. Um, so thank you and welcome, Ms. Wayland. Uh, City Attorney Casher, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to thank in advance, um, Councilmember Toms and Councilmember Tate. We will have a meeting of our municipal code update subcommittee, uh, tomorrow. We haven't had a subcommittee meeting for a while because we just haven't had very many ordinances that have come forward, but we now have, uh, quite a few that we'll be discussing. So we're going to provide an overview of, um, an update to our code enforcement lean process, uh, fireworks ordinance, our encroachment permit requirements, um, Councilmember Murphy's request to, uh, codify the code of ethics in the municipal code. And then we also received feedback from Republic on the SB 1383 ordinance. So we'll be discussing that at length tomorrow during the meeting. We won't be covering all of that tomorrow, but we'll have a series of meetings where we'll discuss each of those ordinances um, for the benefit of the public. All of those ordinances will come to the full city council for approval. So there will be public hearings for all of these and there'll be opportunities for the public to participate. But this is a, an ad hoc subcommittee that's just comprised of the, uh, two city council members and staff for tomorrow. So I want to thank them again in advance for, for their work on that. And, um, that concludes my report.
Thank you, City Attorney Casher. There was one other, I'm not sure whether we call it an ordinance yet or ordinance to be heard, um, and that's the preservation ordinance. Uh, will that be part of the conversation as well?
Yes, so, yeah, that work is ongoing as well. So that will, um, yeah, that, that's moving forward as well.
Thank you. Okay. All right, um, so thank you all for, um, being here tonight and providing your comments and input, et cetera, to, to, uh, the staff work that, uh, compose our agenda. We've come to the portion of the meeting, uh, that's close to adjournment, but however, I'm going to turn first to Mayor Protem Salimi, who has, um, some news for us.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, um, adjourn this meeting on the, in the memory of, uh, Josh Tilton, who passed away last week. Josh was a citizen of the city of Pinole and he worked in Pinole. He passed away at the age of 44 and he left behind five beautiful daughters. Thank you.
And I'm still, um, still got in my mind, five, five children left behind. So it's an unfortunate event and our condolences to the Tilton family. One of the members of the public, um, suggested that we also adjourn, um, considering, um, the veterans that, that have lost their lives over the years and the many different, um, wars and conflicts that the US has entered. And so in memory of all veterans and as well in remembrance of Amber Schwartz, I'm here by adjourning today's meeting until the next regular council meeting of November 16th. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Good night.